The zoning board of adjustment of the township of Bloomfield is now in session for the regular meeting of November 18th, 2021. Notice of the time, date, location and agenda of this meeting to the extent then known was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to provisions of chapter 231 of law of 1975, which is also known as the open public meetings act one by posting such notice on the bulletin board in the municipal building and two by mailing such notices to the offices of the independent press to Bloomfield Life and the Star Leisure. Due to the ongoing pandemic and the effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19, this meeting will be held remotely. It is being held remotely. The public is invited to attend by accessing the meeting either by telephone or video link. The meeting will also be available for viewing on channel 35 Comcast, the channel 30 Verizon, or by streaming live on Facebook Live with the township website. Public is invited to participate via the Zoom meeting by accessing the website link or calling the telephone number given in the agenda. Meeting ID is eight six nine five zero six six three six five zero passcode nine five zero five two four. If you'd like to review the application material at any time or have any questions, please contact the board secretary Nicole Cosenza at n cosenza@bloomfieldtownshipnewjersey.com or nine seven three six eight zero four zero one two. And before we call the roll, we would like to swear in a new and welcome a new member, Mr. Cabrera. Are you present, Mr. Cabrera?
He is.
Yes, I'm present.
Raise your right hand and Mr. Rubin will swear you in.
I'm gonna start off with I and then you're gonna repeat after me. I, and then state your name.
I, Jorge Cabrera.
Do solemnly swear affirm.
Do solemnly solemn affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
That I will uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
And that I will enforce the laws thereof.
And that I will enforce the laws thereof.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear affirm.
I further swear and affirm.
That I'll perform the duties.
That will perform the duties.
Of member of the zoning board of adjustment.
A member of the zoning board of adjustment.
Of the township of Bloomfield.
Of the township of Bloomfield.
In accordance with the laws of the state of New Jersey.
In accordance with the laws of the state of New Jersey.
And the laws of the township of Bloomfield.
And the laws of the township of Bloomfield.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Cabrera.
Thank you.
Ms. Cosenza, please call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Prince?
Present.
Mr. Balnicki?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Present.
Ms. Tolliver?
Present.
Ms. Nazarian?
Present.
Ms. Hilaire?
Present.
Mr. Cabrera?
Present.
Chairman Machowski?
Present.
For the record, Mr. Johnson is absent and also in attendance is the board attorney, Mike Rubin, the board engineer Anthony Marucci, the board traffic engineer, Mr. Fischinger, and I don't know if I see Mr. Williams yet, the board planner, but he will be on as well. He's not here right now. Oh, no, he is. I apologize. He's here. I have two pages worth of names. My bad.
With us, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Good. All right. While we're on the roll call, it's worth reiterating a message that Ms. Cosenza put out to all board members. There are some terms expiring on December 31st, and those are the terms of Mr. Johnson, Mr. Balnicki, myself, and the vacant position that was previously occupied by Mr. Styris, who resigned. So if any of these board members whose term is expiring wish to be considered by the mayor council for reappointment, you should write a letter or send an email to the township clerk expressing your interest to the board, to the mayor and council that you be considered for reappointment. And of course, by the same token, if you do not wish to be reappointed, it would be a good idea to let them know as well. That's all we have on that matter. As far as the agenda, we're moving down to item two, which is communications. We have three requests for adjournments this evening. Board, I have a request from Mr. Mariansky regarding the application at 125 Broughton Avenue. He sent a letter dated November 18th. He requests adjournment to December 9th. He waives time constraints on the board and requests that no further notice be required. And the reason for this is to allow time for preparation of a site plan. Any discussion, board?
Which one were you talking about again, Mr. Machowski?
125 Broughton Avenue.
Thank you.
That would be on the agenda, seven B.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion, board? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to adjourn 125 Broughton to the regular meeting of December 9th with no further notice required?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Balnicki moves it.
Second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. Is there any member of the public here regarding 125 Broughton?
Yes.
Okay, this is being adjourned now to November 9th. There's no further notice required, so.
December 9th.
December 9th?
Excuse me? And there's no further notice, so if you had received a letter in the mail regarding this, you won't receive another one. This is the legal notice of the adjournment.
Understood. Is there any chance that residents in the area of that property are able to see protected plans?
All the plans that are on file with the board are available from the board secretary, Ms. Cosenza.
Okay, perfect.
And I read her phone number and she also has an email address.
Yeah, I have her contact information here. I appreciate that.
And she's in the engineering office in township hall, so you could go visit if you wished to.
Terrific. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You good evening. All in favor, board?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. 125 Broughton is adjourned to the regular meeting of December 9th at 7:00 PM. No further notice is required. Board, that brings us to the next adjournment. I have a letter from Mr. Mariansky dated November 16th. He's requesting adjournment of 58, also known as 34 Bloomfield Avenue, to the regular meeting of December 9th. Waves time constraints, request that no further notice be required. The reason for the adjournment is, again, to allow time for preparation of the site plan. Is there any discussion, board? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to adjourn 58, also known as 34 Bloomfield Avenue, to the regular meeting of December 9th? No further notice required.
So moved, Ms. Tolliver.
Ms. Tolliver moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. Is there any member of the public here regarding this application tonight? I hear and see no one. This is the legal notice of the adjournment. There'll be no further notice required. Board, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. 5834 Bloomfield Avenue is adjourned to the regular meeting of December 9th, 2021, 7:00 PM. No further notice is required. Moving right along, we have a letter, I have a letter in hand from Gassion Pameco representing 25 Lawrence Street. The letter stated November the 18th, they're requesting adjournment to December 9th, 2021 at that regular meeting. They waive time constraints, request no further notice be required, and there's no reason given for the request. Any discussion, board? No? May I have a motion, please, to adjourn 25 Lawrence Street to December 9th? No further notice.
So moved.
Mr. Wagner moves it. Is there a second?
A second.
I'll second.
I heard Ms. Brown first. Is there any member of the public here regarding 25 Lawrence Street?
No.
I hear no one. If I did, I would tell you that this is the legal notice of the adjournment and there'll be no further publication or mailings regarding the adjournment. And with that in mind, board, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. 25 Lawrence Street is adjourned to the regular meeting of December 9th, 7:00 PM. No further notice is required. Okay. Takes care of those adjournments. Moving right along, resolutions. We have a memorializing resolution this evening, board, in the matter of 10 Alden Terrace. This was distributed in advance in draft form for your review and comment. It's the resolution, the matter of the application of John Humerson and Anna Cortel for a floor plan ratio variance pursuant to NJ SA 43,55 D-70D4 and variances pursuant to NJ SA 40, 55D-70C to permit the elimination of a garage, of a garage parking space to the use of an attached garage as living space and the construction of a second floor addition over the converted garage space and a side yard deck at the property located 10 Alden Terrace Block 1186, lot 12. Board, any discussion regarding this memorializing resolution? Hearing no one, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
This could either be Mr. Balnicki, Ms. Hilaire, Ms. Nazarian, Mr. Prince, Mr. Wagner, or Chairman Machowski.
I'll make that motion.
Was Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince, seconds. Please poll the board.
Okay. Mr. Balnicki?
Present.
Ms. Nazarian?
Present.
Mr. Prince?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes.
On these, on these motions for resolutions, you need to vote yes or no. You can't vote present.
All right, so.
Call in the board, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so I need Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
And Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, could I ask you to either boost your mic a little?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
So, the motion carries. The resolution is approved. All right, moving on to minutes, board. We have three sets of minutes that were previously distributed by Ms. Cosenza in draft form for your review and comment. We'll take first the meeting of September 22nd, 2021. That was a regular meeting. Board, any comments concerning the minutes of that meeting?
Present.
There are no one, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd?
So moved.
Mr. Balnicki moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconds, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. Minutes of September 22nd, 2021 are approved as submitted. That brings us to the minutes of the regular meeting of October 7th, 2021. Any discussion regarding these, board? No one, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
And Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. Minutes of October 7th, 2021 are approved as submitted. That brings us to the minutes of the special meeting of October 20th, 2021. Board, any discussion? I hear no discussion. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 20th, please?
So moved.
Mr. Balnicki moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. The minutes, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. The minutes of the special meeting of October 20th, 2021 are approved as submitted. Thank you, board.
Chairman, I hate to interrupt you. I just have to ask, Bob from Channel 35 asked if you could maybe speak up because he's having a hard time hearing you.
I'll try. This is basically the best we can do here.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure. All right, that brings us to upcoming applications to consider for the review by our experts, the board's professional planner, the board's traffic engineer, or both. The first one is 147, also known as 67 Park Avenue. It's more commonly known as the Presbyterian Church on the Green. The church is in an R1A single-family zone and a applicant, co-applicant with the church is proposing a childcare center use on part of the facility. Board, discussion as to whether we need to engage the planner and/or the traffic expert on this matter?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, I believe there's been childcare there before because I think I went there many years ago, but I don't think we need traffic because it's not gonna, it's not that large. I don't, as I recall, they're not large classes and I don't think that it's gonna seriously require a traffic study. And for the same reason, I don't think that there's a need for a planner because I think that's been a service provided in that facility before, but my two cents.
Okay, this is daycare, not, not the Sunday school, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, daycare.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I might, I would say, just, just given I've, I've had my son on Broad Street further down as well, and there's, it's right across the street from the high school.
Yes.
I would recommend maybe we at least engage the traffic engineer for this, just given, given the flow that's been there and how it's evolved over the last five or six years, at least for sure. That would be my, my recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, maybe the secretary can answer this. I think that Presbyterian Church on the Green had a prior application for a theater or something like that, and there was a variances given for that.
I believe you're correct. Whether or not there was a traffic study done, I would have to pull that application to look, but I think you might be right if that's what you're thinking. I think we might have done something on that property.
Yeah, but if I'm not mistaken, I think that was mainly just for the weekend. Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I don't remember.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'd have to pull the file to look.
Well, in, in any case, I think to make it simpler, I think I agree with Mr. Wagner. You know, definitely a, a, a traffic review on this.
All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Wagner, you want him?
Is it, is this a motion for, for just the traffic?
Whatever.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Traffic, it could be for both or neither, whatever motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion for a traffic, a traffic review.
Okay. And not, not the planner, is that correct?
Not the planner. I, I think just the traffic engineer from my point of view on this one.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Balnicki, seconds. All in favor, better poll the board, we're spending money.
Okay. All right, Ms. Brown, oh, am I muted? No, okay, Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Prince? You're muted, Mr. Prince.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Balnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Tolliver?
Yes.
Ms. Nazarian?
Yes.
Ms. Hilaire?
Yes.
Chairman Machowski?
Yes. Please let the traffic engineer know we need his assistance.
Okay. Can I just interrupt you for one second, Chairman? I'm sorry, there's somebody on that has a phone number of nine seven three seven one five nine five five six. I need you to identify yourself, please? Because if you don't identify yourself, at some point, I'm gonna take you out of the Okay, Chairman, you can keep going, but prior to us starting an application, I'm gonna need to know who this is.
That brings us to the next application to consider for review by the board planner or the board traffic engineer. This is 21 Sherman Court Board. It's a residence, a residence has added a dormer without permits, as I understand it, and they now are in need of a variance.
Nancy Yakabuchi, Edgewood Road.
I'm sorry, can you spell your name?
Yes, Nancy, N-A-N-C-Y, last name I-A, C as in Charlie, O, C as in boy, U, C-C-I.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Discussion board, this is addition of a dormer on a house.
This is for 21 Sherman?
Correct.
Yeah, in, in light of this application being in the back there and in looking over the plan and that, I think, I think we should definitely consider traffic and planner on this one. It's, it's, it's an odd situation, I think, with this house.
Why traffic, Mr. Balnicki?
Well, maybe, maybe not traffic, definitely planner. It, it, because it almost seems like, well, I, I guess I shouldn't judge right away, but it almost seems like a two-family house. It's an odd, odd situation, coming off Sherman and then going down, you know, the one-way out to Orange Street.
All right, anyone else, discussion board?
Mr. Rubin, we can't hear you, I don't, for some reason.
I don't know why. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Balnicki, Mr. Marucci and I have a long history with this property. This is a, a, basically an attached, attached, single-family dwelling with a common wall that shares a driveway on the, on one side with the adjacent property owner. We, this property actually was before this board quite some years ago when a different owner owned this property. My, my comment with respect to this is, this is a one-family home and will remain a one-family home. It's a D2 variance as an expansion of a non-conforming use because it's in the central business district. And because the central business district has no bulk standards, I believe, although I can't tell from my review of the application, that this is the only relief they need is because it's, it's a single-family dwelling in the CBD where single-family dwellings are not permitted and they want to put a dormer on it. However, I want to ask Nicole to contact the applicant. The applicant is really an LLC and it's a multi-member LLC and they say they have no attorney and they need an attorney. They can't appear before us without an attorney.
I will tell them.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I'll withdraw my request on the planner and hearing Mr. Rubin's explanation on this.
Right.
Plus two, with it being an LLC and the requiring of an attorney, I'm sure that'll add a little more clarity to this application.
Any other discussion, board? I believe the consensus is we do not need experts on that one, so other than Ms. Cosenza informing the applicant that they need an attorney, I think that takes care of 21 Sherman All right, moving right along. That brings us to item four on the agenda. It's approval of the 2022 meeting schedule. Board, this has been distributed to you for review and comment. Nicole Cosenza has revised it, and we now have before us the final schedule for the zoning board in 2022. And you'll notice that we've scheduled in advance at least two meetings in every month. The second meeting may be canceled if it's not needed, but considering the high volume of business and the difficulty of setting up special meetings, we thought it best to, to schedule two meetings a month in advance. And you have that scheduled before you. There's two, two possibilities that will be decided next year, how to handle it. One possibility is the first meeting has applications scheduled and the second meeting of the month is to handle ones that are, are not able to be completed during the first meeting. And another possibility would be to have two separate tracks where the first meeting, for example, handles use variances and the second meeting of the month handles C variances, which usually take a lot less time. So that, that can be decided next year, but I just wanted to give you the reasoning, board, for having two meetings a month. Is there any discussion regarding the proposed schedule?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, I think it makes sense since we had to find a lot of special meetings this past year and it's, you know, denser schedule, but hopefully we'll have an easier time without having to juggle for new meetings, better than an ad hoc schedule, I think.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree.
Yeah.
All right, may I have a, a motion to approve the schedule as submitted by the board secretary?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Brown moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one opposed. Proposed schedule is then adopted for 2022 as submitted. All right. Thank you. Item five, withdrawal of 231 Broughton Avenue. I have a letter dated October 25th from Mr. Gassion, who's the representative of 231 Broughton Avenue. They're withdrawing their application. Any discussion, board? We're, I would expect we'd obtain motion to dismiss it without prejudice since we already started it. Any discussion, board?
If we dismiss it without prejudice, it means they can bring it back?
Yes.
And we make a motion to dismiss it with prejudice? I don't know.
We could, but that would, we would have to have a reason.
Okay.
Any other discussion, board? I have, in that case, oh, is there any member of the public here regarding that application?
Yes, there's a couple of members here, I believe.
Yeah, if the, if the application is being dismissed, is it important to still hear our concerns?
No.
We can't.
We can't.
Okay.
Because it would have to be read, read into the record and they'd have to start the application and concerns, of course, could be heard during the application, but they're, they're simply withdrawing it and saying that at this time, they're not proceeding. We dismiss it without prejudice, meaning that they could reapply with the same application if they so desired at some future time, or not.
But you would also get notice of that if they do, so.
Whoever was noticed before would be noticed again and appear in the paper, posted on the.
Thank you for the clarification.
Certainly. Any other discussion? All right, may I have a motion, please, to dismiss 231 Broughton Avenue without prejudice?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Nazarian moves it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince, seconds. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? I hear no one. I hear no one opposed, therefore motion carries. And two thirty-one Broughton Avenue is dismissed without prejudice. All right. Moving right along, and before we get to old business, I want to cover another topic. The township has adopted a practice in the last few years where they request proposals to provide experts, expert consultants to the planning board and the zoning board. Um, they advertise and receive a number of, of proposals from various firms. And, uh, the board will be asked to select amongst these proposals. And I have established a committee, committee of three, which is less than a quorum, to review the proposals that have been received by the township and to make a recommendation to the whole board as to a selection of experts at the reorganization meeting next year. Uh, I've appointed Vice Chairman Bellnicki, Senior Board Member, Mr. Prince and myself to sit on this committee. Uh, we will review the applications. By way of a, uh, motion and a vote, we will then make a recommendation out of the committee to the whole board for decision in January. I thank the, Mr. Bellnicki and Mr. Prince for their willingness to serve on this committee.
I did get those RFPs out today, so you guys should be receiving them soon. And if anybody else is interested in seeing the RFPs, I have them, just contact me and we'll work it out. Just for your own edification, if you want to see them.
Okay, and just for clarification, the reason we limited the three members, that's less than a quorum of the board. So the three members can get together and look them over. If we had more than three, we'd have to conduct an open public meeting for the, for the initial review process. Of course, the final selection and vote will be at the open public reorganization meeting next year. Any questions, Board? Any discussion?
The only comment I have is you always do such a great job and thank you for taking on that duty. It's not, you know, it's time-consuming, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. All right, that moves us on to, uh, old business. Item six. Old Business is the application under six A of Ann Lourdes as applicant and owner for minor site plan approval, a use variance, bulk variances, and any such other relief as may be required from zoning ordinance attached to a Bloomfield to convert a one-family dwelling into a four-family dwelling and a residential one-family R1B zone, and the premise is known as MAP eleven, block two forty-nine, lot thirty, lot three, better known as sixty-five Park Avenue. Do we have, uh, counsel for the applicant with us tonight?
Your Chairman Machowski, John Vetery, on behalf of the applicant, Ann Lourdes, sixty-five Park Avenue, Bloomfield.
Right? Go ahead, Mr. Vetery.
I don't know if you want to put it on the record that we also have, uh, an attorney here for an objector, I believe, Mr. Harrison.
Bill Harrison, on behalf of the objector, Victoria Larson.
Um, Mr. Harrison, I'm, I'm gonna engage you in this discussion that Mr., uh, Vetery and I have had off, off camera, so to speak. We have seven members who could hear this application tonight. Mr. Bellnicki recused himself and will likely recuse himself again, so I'm not going to count him. However, of those seven members, only six were at the original August hearing. One, Ms. Nazarian, was not. Uh, Mr. Vetery has indicated to me that, that there were some fairly modest changes to the site plan. And, um, because we only have six eligible members, he would like to begin from the beginning and start a new application tonight, uh, so that he would have seven members here eligible to hear and vote. And I know your experience in this field and I thought I'd give you an opportunity to be heard about, on that issue.
So basically, it's as if nothing had happened at the prior hearing and, and it's only what's going to be presented tonight uh, that will be considered as part of the record.
Uh, yes, essentially, I guess the legal term is de novo. So the applicant, the application commenced de novo. Is that correct, Mr. Vetery?
I agree with that, you know, because we made, in my estimation, some pretty substantial changes to the plan. Um, I feel that we were going to be starting over anyway with the architect and the engineering. In fact, after the August nineteenth meeting, we received fully updated comment letters, review comments from Nishwain, from Mr. Marucci and from Brightview. So I think that based upon that, uh, if we get a fresh look at it, it has been several months since everyone's heard it, so to refresh everyone's recollection, I don't think we'd be taking up any more time. Uh, and that would be, um, uh, give us the ability to have, um, seven members.
Do you have an objection to that?
No, I do not.
All right.
Can I just make it clear for everyone so they know who's voting? Because we have alternates here that are voting.
Everyone is voting. Because Mr. Bellnicki is recusing himself, so we have eight members present.
Wait a minute, Mr. Cabrera is not voting.
Oh, Mr. Cabrera is not voting.
Right, and Ms. Nazarian isn't voting because Ms. Tolliver is here. This is why I wanted to make this clear.
Ms. Nazarian is number, the seventh member.
So let me go through this. I have Chairman Machowski. I have Ms. Brown. I have Mr. Prince. I have Mr. Wagner. I have Ms. Tolliver. And I have Ms. Hilaire. Ms. Hilaire is alternate number three, who votes before Ms. Nazarian. Oh, wait, so Ms. Nazarian is number seven.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we will have seven eligible members to vote, uh, if we begin from the beginning.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rubin, thank you, uh, Ms. Cosenza, and, um, thank you to the board and also to Mr. Harrison.
And as I said, I'm, I am going to recuse. Yes, I want to recuse myself from this application.
All right, Mr. Bellnicki stands recused. Uh, Mr., uh, Terry, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, John Vetery on behalf of the applicant, Ann Lourdes, owner of the site at sixty-five Park Avenue. So, uh, by way of a little bit of history here, the, the, um, there was an application that included the neighboring property, which is, um, owned under similar ownership at sixty-seven Park Avenue. I don't think it got very far. It entailed the demolition of that building and I believe about a twenty-unit building there. That application was withdrawn. I didn't handle the application. I don't believe it got very far. Um, based upon some objections that were heard and, uh, the building at sixty-seven is actually a fine-looking building. When the applicant acquired this building, the property, this home at sixty-five, the home for, for years, and the applicant can speak to this, was clearly, uh, operating as more of a group home. There were, um, lots of, uh, I believe soccer players that, uh, participated in, uh, some, uh, members of a soccer team over at the Dome in Montclair. And prior to that, there was some type of a, um, you know, group-type living. The, the property that is located here on Park is surrounded by, uh, several large, you know, some pre-war multifamily buildings. Tonight, we're going to have our, uh, within the application, we're gonna start out with David Fantina, who's gonna review the site plan freshly. Uh, followed by Tom Messick, who is the architect, who, uh, took a lot of the comments of the board members and the professionals, and we'll start out fresh, but you'll see that those changes have been made as well as many of the comments of Mr. Marucci on the engineering side. And that will be followed by, uh, Frank Miletto for the planning testimony. This is a D variance that receives and a density variance, as well as some bulk variances for setbacks and building coverage and lot coverage. So that, that's an overview of the application. And what I'd like to do is start, we'll get Dave Fantina sworn in. He's the professional engineer on this application. And he's our first witness.
Okay, Mr. Fantini, where are you?
I'm here.
Okay, oh, there you are. I'm sorry, I just wanted to see. Raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
David Fantina.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Fantini, if you would, give the board the benefit of your professional and educational expertise.
Uh, yes, uh, I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. Been licensed since nineteen eighty-seven. I hold a bachelor's and a master's degree, both in civil and environmental engineering. Both from Marcus University. I've been the proprietor of Fantina Engineering, uh, for twenty years. And I did prepare the plans that are before you tonight. And I routinely appear before, uh, planning boards and boards of adjustment around the state.
Okay, license is in good standing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion, Board? Here, no one, the board will accept Mr. Fantina as a professional engineer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, okay, Mr. Fantina, um, I don't know if you want to share your screen as we are going through a full, fresh look at the, at the plan and the site plan, and I will jump in as I see necessary.
You should be able to share the screen, no problem. Let me know if you have any issues. Oh, there you go.
Okay, there you go. Thank you very much. So, uh, the, the screen I'm, I'm sharing, these are the plans that the board has. They're the preliminary and final site plan, uh, which we prepared. And they have a revision date of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
All right, let's just mark this A1, even though it's the plan you handed in.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what I'm doing at the moment is, uh, I'm showing you sheet two of the plans, which show on the left-hand side of the screen the existing conditions and on the right-hand side, the proposed conditions. As Mr. Vetery said, there is presently a, um, uh, uh, an existing, uh, house on the property. There's also quite a large garage in the back. The garage will remain. We're gonna be knocking the house down and constructing a four-family dwelling. There is a driveway on the right-hand side that will be reshaped and, uh, still on the right-hand side. Gonna make this a little bit smaller so you can see it a little bit better. Yeah, boy, hang on a second, bear with me here. It does not want to cooperate. There we go. Okay, so the, the existing garage, it's a three-car garage, will remain in the rear of the property. Um, so what we're, we're proposing is, uh, the entrance driveway, three parking spaces, including one, a handicap-accessible space with three additional spaces in the existing garage for a total of six. Eight spaces are required, uh, however, we're requesting a variance of two spaces. I should point out to the board, um, that an earlier version of this plan did have seven spaces, but it was felt very strongly that we needed to provide handicap access. So we took out one space and added, uh, the, the wheelchair-accessible parking. Uh, another earlier version of the plan had the access all the way out to the front, so that anybody uh, parking in the rear had to walk all the way to the front or be pushed in a wheelchair all the way to the front. And the entrance was up here in the front of the building. Based on discussion at the previous board meetings, and the architect will, uh, talk about this in more detail. An entrance now has been placed on the side so that this, this length has been shortened. Uh, it makes it easier to get in. It also gives us room for the, uh, air conditioning units. Uh, I think board members and professionals were concerned that they had originally been placed back in this area, which was closer to neighboring residential properties. Up here, this is not a, a residential property, it's a multi-use building, so it's a better location for these. In, in addition to that, we've made some other changes. We've moved the trash recyclables to the east side of the existing garage as opposed to the west side. Again, the reason for that is because it's away from residential properties back in this area. The property to the east is actually a large, uh, parking lot with, with the residents in the front. So we think that all these, uh, changes, which were, uh, requested by the board and your professionals, have made this a, a better plan. Uh, not only for, uh, for the applicant, but especially for the neighborhood, uh, more, more conducive to something that, that would uh, work with the, with the neighboring properties. Uh, I'm going to switch to sheet three for a moment. Allow me also to say that we did previously agree to curb the parking lot and the driveway. That will be done. I didn't have a chance to show that on this version, but we will be, uh, if the board sees fit to approve this, uh, the, the entire parking lot will be curbed, as was discussed at a previous meeting. We've provided a dry well in this area to catch the, uh, runoff from the rooftop. Uh, my discussions with Mr. Marucci, there's an overflow to this rate in the, uh, northern, north-westerly corner of the property. Uh, I don't think he took exception to the dry well itself, but he felt this was an inappropriate place to move the, uh, the overflow. That will be relocated, and I believe, Mr. Marucci, you and I had said offline that we would find a better location and a better way to have an overflow from this property. We agreed to that at the other meeting. We're still agreeing to, uh, move this to your satisfaction. Essentially, that's it, except I should tell the board that we are requesting the following variances in addition to the density variance and the use variance. I already mentioned the parking variance, eight spaces are required, and we have six proposed. There's also a front yard variance. We have eleven-point-three-foot, uh, front yard proposed, twenty feet is required. And then there's a building coverage, twenty-five percent maximum is, is allowed. We're at thirty-six-point-five percent. That includes, of course, the relatively large garage to remain. And the lot coverage, uh, the maximum allowed is sixty percent. And we're at seventy-seven-point-eight percent, so we are requesting variances for building coverage and for lot coverage, as Mr. Vetery had indicated.
Dave, just, just walk through the parking variance as well.
Yes, I think I had said that, but the parking variance, there's, uh, four units, four residential units, uh, proposed. Each one requires two spaces, so four times two is eight. And what we're providing is, uh, six, one, two, three in the, in the garage and then three, including the handicap space along the rear of the building. So we're providing six, whereas eight are required.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, you've had the opportunity to review Mr. Marucci's former letters and then the updated letter dated September fourth. I believe you addressed all of the items here uh, in your testimony with regard to the, um, with regard to the side entrance to the first floor dwelling. The, the change that you made from, uh, the prior, what, what is the, approximately, what is the amount of feet from the parking lot to that door?
If you bear with me for one minute, I can, I can tell you that.
I think the dog objects.
That's, that's not my dog, guy.
That's the cutest old dog bark I've ever heard.
That's Ms. Brown's dog, I believe.
I absolutely love it.
My apologies, she was, uh, expressing her feelings.
That's it, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, no problem.
Unlucky yes vote to me. Uh, it's about, it's about thirty-eight feet from the, uh, parking lot, uh, to the doorway there.
Okay, and formerly that was approximately one hundred, is that correct?
Uh, well, if you went around the side, it was, it was close to a hundred because it was about sixty-six, it's probably between ninety and a hundred, yes.
Okay, and you mentioned the, uh, that the applicant has agreed to the curbing?
Yes.
And, uh, with respect to the building-mounted lighting, that was agreed to as well?
Yes, we're gonna provide, the only lights, uh, that we've proposed would be building-mounted architectural-type lights. And we'll certainly provide the, um, the information, uh, to your office, uh, whatever you're requiring, and we'll shield them so there's no spillage off the property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fantini, I have no further questions.
Board questions for Mr. Fantina?
Mr. Fantina, can you unshare the screen? This way I could see if anybody's raising their hand.
I have, I'll have a question.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Alrighty, so I guess I thought we were gonna have this started from the beginning, but it wasn't as wholesome an overview as I thought we might get because we were starting over, so, um, but I'll recollect what we talked about last time. So, from an architectural point of view, um, the other buildings in this area have, uh, there's a pergola, two pergola, I don't know if that's what they call, not a pergola, two little outdoor areas in the buildings two doors down, I think sixty-five Park Avenue and, and the ones on each side of it. And there's a little barbecue seating area for the building next door to that one. And I'm wondering what kind of amenities you have in mind for this building by way of seating, public enjoyment, bike rack? seating, public enjoyment, bike rack for for families, people have interest. It's a small lot. So I'm aware of your space predicament, given the fact that you're looking for a waiver for lot coverage. So I'm not trying to be coy about it, but what considerations and what is your opinion on the fact that there hasn't been any kind of social environment presented to me today to the board?
To some extent, I would defer to the architect on that, but I but I would say that the obvious answer is that there's not a lot of room on the site for those types of things. If if residents have bicycles, there will be an opportunity to store them in the garage or in the basement. But there's really not the opportunity to put your seating area or grill outside on this property. We did add some landscaping in the front and in the rear. But that's really for for neighborhood enhancement, not not for the use of the residents.
With respect to that landscaping, can you point that out a little more specifically?
Yes, it's shown on sheet two of the plan. I'll share real quickly again. And what we're showing here is, hold on a second. We're showing arborvitae's in the rear of the property in this area. And then in the front, we're also showing a variety of plantings, including a shade tree and some boxwoods and boxwoods or other shrubs in the front.
I'm familiar with that large shade tree that's on the Park Avenue. You're only putting in six spaces. I know you may have a planning person that you might want to defer to. Do you have any comments or thoughts on the scarcity of parking there on Park Avenue and the fact that you would be looking for variants there?
There will be discussion of that based from the planner.
Okay, thank you.
Following up on Ms. Brown's questions, I was wondering, being that this is a single family zone, R1B, and you're proposing a four family dwelling. Would it not be more conducive to being able to provide outdoor space such as described by Ms. Brown if we had a less dense development? And by the same token, wouldn't that not reduce the parking demand? So if you had a less dense dwelling proposed, you would need less parking spaces and perhaps have more room for amenities? Could you comment on that, please?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, that that's that certainly goes without saying that if it was less dense, there would be less of a parking demand and we could we could meet it. There's no argument with that. But I do believe that our planner will point out that he he feels, as we do as a team, that this is the appropriate density for this property. But that's really more his purview than mine.
Understood. And one other question, Mr. Fantina. You discussed the overflow and that it needed to be relocated. Are you confident, and I'll ask the same question of our board's engineer later, are you confident that there's a given the density on this property, that there's an appropriate place to put the overflow?
Yes, I am. Mr. Marucci and I discussed it at some length. And I believe what we're gonna have to do, and I I have to satisfy Mr. Marucci on this, and he's adamant, and I think correctly so, that it doesn't affect the neighbors, which we wouldn't want to either, that it goes out towards the street, and we have to make that work.
Right. Other questions for Mr. Fantina, please?
We have a couple people with their hands up. I don't know who you I have. I know I see a resident's hand up, but we also have Mr. Fischinger and Mr. Williams have questions and Mr. Marucci.
Go ahead, Mr. Marucci.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just one question. Mr. Fantina, in my latest report, I questioned the location of the refuse recycling area. Is a conflict between your plan and the architect's plan? You have it on the easterly side of the garage and the architect has it on the westerly side, which is it?
It's my understanding that it will be on the easterly side.
And it'll be buffered and screened accordingly with a concrete pad on the ground and
Concrete pad.
And I will get those details.
Absolutely.
That's the only question I have right now. Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll have my comments at a later date.
Thank you, Ms. Marucci. Who else has a question?
Mr. Wagner's hand is up.
Go ahead, Mr. Wagner.
Wrong hand here. So, Mr. Fantina, I had a question about, do we know the the amount of units per acre? That would be on here, or is that a question for that I would ask the planner?
No, I could calculate that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Just give me one moment. There's So that's
Wagner, I believe the planner has an exhibit showing, I think he has it at 20.67, is that what you have, Dave?
I guess slightly more than that, but that's off the top of my head to some extent.
Okay, I can hold my question until the planner then, that that's more of the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Williams has a question, looks like.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Secretary. Mr. Fantina, the location of the air conditioning condensers, where will they be now?
Again, I'll share my screen pictures, wrote a thousand words.
And while you're doing that, what was the what's the date of the this drawing?
It stated revised August 26, 21.
Thank you.
And the air conditioning units, if you see my screen here, they're to the west of the building. The walkway dead ends in this area and then comes in to the side entrance, and they're between the side entrance and the front.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Dave, while you're at it, just point out where the garbage is, you know, that it's close to the edge of the parking lot there, and we have a pad.
It's right there.
Okay, thank you.
See, Ms. Alvarez has a question. I see the hand raised. You're on mute. You must take
You're on mute, Mr. Alvarez.
Sorry, my my question was about the garbage.
I just need you to state your name and address for the record.
John hours 39 Fontaine.
Thank you.
And I'm also on the open space committee, which is one of the reasons I'm here, just, oh, my question was a follow up to the trash collection. There was some question about the amount of trash and the suitability of the site. I seem to remember recall that argument last time, you know, not only was it the right place, but it's part of the general density problem of the area. And I seem to remember some conversation about that last time. That's just my comment.
Mr. Fischinger, you have your hand up?
Yes, Joe Fischinger replied for you. Mr. Fantina, just one or two quick questions. And I know you may have covered this in previous hearings, but I want to make sure it's on the the current record. Could you address snow removal? First of all, how will snow removal be addressed on site?
Yep, Mr. Fischinger, thank you for pointing that out. I did say at the previous hearing, but since we're starting again, I do need to say it. So I thank you for that. Anytime there's any kind of decent snow, what's going to have to happen is snow will have to be taken off the site. There's not enough room on this property, not no extra room in the parking lot for snow to be moved around. So for a little two or three inch snowfall, we can probably find a place to plow it. But if we get a decent snowfall of 12 inches or something, it's going to have to be taken off the site and the applicant or property manager will have to contract with a hauler to get it off the site.
Okay, and then I believe in your testimony, you stated that the driveway and parking lot would be curbed. Did you look at, does that change the width of the driveway once you put the curbing in, or is it still 10 feet as noted on your plans?
It's still going to be 10 feet. There is room. We discussed that at a previous hearing. I think that the if you look at the the building is as close as 11.8 feet to the property line, so there still is room to get a 10 feet with six inch curve on each side. So yes, there will still be 10 foot wide driveway.
And will that would the curb and impact the chain link fence on the eastern edge of the property?
If it does, that would have to be replaced. That looks like it's just slightly onto this property, so it would have to be replaced on the property line.
And you'd be proposing to replace that in kind if need be?
If need be.
All right, that's all my questions for now, Mr. Chairman.
The questions? Board questions? Anyone in the public with a question?
Phil Harrison, I have a number of questions for Mr. Fantina. I guess one thing you didn't cover in your testimony was what trees that are currently on the property will be removed?
Okay, Mr. Harrison, let me take a look at that. The only trees that I'm aware of are two mature trees in the front of the property. They will both be removed.
And you're replacing them with one shade, one shade tree?
One shade tree and then some plantings in the back, one shade tree in the front.
And you're not aware of any trees in the rear of the property that will be removed?
I am not. I'm just hoping to survey.
Dave, I think I think there are, I think there are some cedar trees that are to the left. You're pulling in the driveway to the left, very, very close to the house. I think there are some cedar trees that will be removed as well.
Okay, I'm trying to look at Google Maps.
We can survey them and give more detail on the on the tree removal. But I've been to the site a number of times. I believe there are those cedar trees that are there.
Hey, I'm not I'm not aware of them, but that may be the case.
The the curbing, will a portion of the curbing be abutting the property line to the east?
Yes, more or less, yes.
And will a portion of it be in a basically right adjacent to the house in order to keep the 10 foot wide driveway?
Yes.
And the curbing will be six inches high?
Yes. I say yes, although there may be a part in the back where it's less than six inches high, simply so it doesn't become a tripping hazard.
Well, that's what I mean, several parts, I mean, one, my concern is potential for stormwater runoff impacting my client's property. And I'm going to do more on stormwater in a second, but you know, I want to, you know, but I want to understand where you would think the curbing might be less than six inches.
Mr. Harrison, I can share my screen and show you what I have in mind there. It wouldn't affect your client's property at all. The only place I would think would be around this bull nose. Because I would think that this would be something somebody might trip over. But back in this area, which is adjacent to your client's property or along here, that would certainly be the six inch height. Or even in this area, it would be six inch height. I would only be concerned about it right in this little bull nose area.
Okay, and then sticking on drainage, then you had indicated that you thought that you would have to do it so the property would drain to the street, but currently the property drains to the rear of the property. Is that correct?
It does. It's relatively flat and generally what has to happen in a case like this is that and Mr. Marucci can correct me if I'm wrong, but what generally has to happen is that we allow some ponding, if there's an overflow of the dry well system onto the applicant's property so that there's there's water ponding in the in the parking lot before it goes out anywhere, and then it would go out towards the street.
I guess, you know, but then in terms of the elevations you're showing, that's going to require some considerable ponding before anything would flow out to the street.
Well, no, it's it's not the best idea, but I think in this case, we would probably have could even put a pump in so that if it reached a certain level, it would have to get pumped out towards the street.
That's that's not shown on your plans at all, but you think you would you would need to pump the stormwater from the dry well out to the street?
It's it's certainly a possibility. As I said, Mr. Marucci had indicated to me both on the phone and I think in his letter that changes were required to the dry well system, not the dry well system, but the overflow of the dry well system. And in our discussions, we said we would work it out. And that we would make the water go in a different direction where it was not affecting neighboring properties. I'm somewhat brainstorming at the moment, but we have to get it someplace so it doesn't go towards your your client or towards other neighbors.
And that's, you know, I, you know, I think there are limited options and I, you know, I think it would have been much better for the board to see exactly what's proposed and understand whether one, it would effectively drain it off the property and not affect the neighboring properties and two, what extent, you know, would there be resulting ponding within the parking lot, which would create an unsafe condition for the residents of the house?
We can certainly provide all that detail for you.
The trash enclosure, you indicated it would be screened. Is there room to screen it on the side of it, or is it effectively will the trash enclosure occupy the entire space between the garage and the properties to the east?
The screening will be a fence. There's no room for for a shrubbery. The screening will be a fence.
And are you proposing any screening to the rear of the trash enclosure?
It would also be a fence.
The and the driveway width only allows a car, one car to go by at a time, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So if a car starts pulling in off of Park Avenue and someone is pulling out of one of the spaces and will not immediately see that car. And if all the parking spaces are occupied, how will the cars maneuver in order to get the one car in and the other car out?
There's only four residents, so what we're expecting is that there's going to have to be a little bit of a good neighbor policy and somebody's going to have to back up and let the other car come in. That that's done in in these types of situations.
And so currently in terms of lot coverage and building coverage, the property is conforming to the ordinance, correct?
That is correct.
And so and you're creating a new variance in terms of the front yard setback as well, is that correct?
That is also correct.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Does anyone else have a question?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. George, if I could just piggyback on Mr. Harrison's question. Mr., will the details for the proposed screening for trash receptacle be provided? So I don't think I have it in my plans.
Certainly, well, yes. I would think of, you know, board on board vinyl type fence, but yes, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Entire name, Kristen Apolitano, I can't wait to say it. There it is. Do you have a question?
Hi, yes, Kristen Apolitano, 35 Giles Road, Harrington Park, New Jersey. I'm a former resident of Edgewood Road. I have two questions. My first is, can you clarify how many variances are being requested for this property?
Certainly, the variances are there's a use variance for the four family. There's a density variance for the number of units per acre. There is a front yard variance, 11.3 feet is proposed versus 20 feet required. And then there are variances for building coverage and lot coverage. 36 and a half percent for the building coverage versus 25% allowed. And 77.8% for the lot coverage versus 60% allowed. And finally, the parking spaces, eight spaces are required and six are provided.
So I'm counting seven, I think.
Is that six or seven? I wasn't counting, but whatever.
Thank you. And is there a maximum then that someone could request?
No, no, I No, no, I, it's each, each, um, and there's a number of people could answer that question better than I could in this meeting, but, uh, each application stands on its own merits with whatever number of variances are required by that application.
Thank you.
Ms. Napolitano, can you, can you just do me a favor and clarify your address again?
Thirty-five Giles Road in Harrington Park, New Jersey.
Harrington Park, and can you spell your last name for me, because I can't see the whole thing on the screen?
Sure, it's long, Napolitano, N A P O L I T A N O.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Ms. Cassin, I just had a question for Ms. Napolitano, I just wanted to clarify something for the record and, uh, Harrington Park, the mayor is my former history teacher, Mr. Holsher, good, uh, great town. So you're moving from, I was just unclear, you're moving from Harrington Park to this street, or you were a former resident? I'm just unclear as to what your concern is with respect to this application.
Former resident of Edgewood Road.
So not a current resident, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Prince, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to ask the architect about the, uh, the garbage area of the proposed, um, fencing around there. I am not certain about the width of that, but if your fencing is going to go up, will the be, will there be enough room to maintain the, uh, the appearance and the cleanliness of that, uh, area?
Mr. Prince, just for clarification, we're talking to the engineer, still not the architect.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I can probably still answer that as well as the architect, and yes, I believe that's the case, uh, the defense would be on the property line, which is not unusual in this, in this neighborhood. Um, but yes, I, you, the short answer is yes, I believe it could still be kept.
Okay, to answer the commissioner's question, I believe at one point you had shown from specifications, it was a Rubbermaid system that the applicant has used in other properties. Um, I believe in Montclair or Little Falls, and, uh, I, we can provide that information. But my recollection was it was more than adequate, given almost six feet there to have those two units, and again, this is just surveying those four units. So there's no, here, it's really a simple residential unit that you see a lot of two, three and four families.
My concern is more for the, uh, uh, the spacing around it for getting in, maintaining, since it's so close to the neighboring property.
Yeah, we, we can definitely supply the detail of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I see Mr. Alvarez has still has his hand up, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir, uh.
Time for questions for the engineer, please.
Yes, yes, uh, backing up, the mention of the water just reminded me of something. Since we had the last meeting where I talked, we've had that massive rainstorm and a lot of flooding that has made, I've talked to, I know some of the other people, and there's Bluefield is needing to really reconsider.
Do you have a question for the engineer?
I had my friends in here. My question is, I think we should, we should have much more, has he, we evaluate the floodwater condition in the light of the recent disaster we had in Bluefield about excess rainwater due to increased rainfall due to global warming quite often. In other words, this is what has recently happened, is a wake up call for drainage in Bluefield. We had disasters all through the town, so we should consider the drain of the water problem much more seriously than he, I think, is.
If, if the question is, have I reanalyzed it in, in light of the new storms? Uh, no, and the answer for that is
Right, 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 right.
That there are certain, um, criteria in place. Obviously, we've had a, not one, but two or three really historic storms in the last couple of months. But we design for historic storms and, um, we design for hundred year storms and hundred year storms have a lot of different meanings, so you can get two, two hundred year storms in three weeks. But we design for a variety of storms, um, including the large ones.
Any other questions? Board, public, anyone?
I have a question.
Ms. Brown, go ahead.
I would just ask that you, uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Could you elaborate on two quick things, one was that you just said that you allow for stormwater, what exact, what, can you give an example, what have you done?
Yeah, well, what we do is, um, when you design, um, for a project like this, you design for a variety of storms and in, in this case, and, and let me just go to my, my detail sheet here, so I'm not speaking out of turn. So what we do, we do is we design for, um, uh, three inches of runoff in this case. Over a, uh, over all of the increase in impervious surfaces, and, and three inches is a, quite a large storm. It's, you know, um, depending on the, uh, the amount of time that it takes that storm, that could be anywhere from a, a two year storm to a hundred year storm. But we design, uh, in this case for a three inches of runoff. And that wouldn't have changed based on any storms we got in the last few weeks or few months.
Um, I don't know what you mean by the last, it, it wouldn't have increased by the storms in the last few weeks, can you just clarify what you're saying?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Alvarez was asking, did I reanalyze the, the storm or the, the stormwater management based on that? And the answer is no, and, and the reason for that is that the criteria for the storms haven't changed. Despite the fact that we've had some huge storms in the last few weeks. We had huge storms thirty years ago, we had historic storms, you know, forty years ago, and they got into the, into the, uh, engineering analyses, so these aren't new events, even though we've had them more frequently now in the last several months and several years, these are not new events that we're not prepared for, not designing for. This is something we, that's built into our design.
Okay, so just clarifying, you said it's, it's built into your design, but you haven't substantially changed the design to accommodate for increased storms like the one that happened, the remnants of Hurricane Ida that came through on September nine, uh, one.
That is correct.
Okay, as an engineer, are you going to, is your team going to bring forth someone who is specializing in storms? Or would you be the right person to ask a storm related question?
I would be the right person.
Okay, um, are you aware that storms in our area have averaged three point four major storms a year? In the last, and that that has increased now according to NOAA to eighteen point six storms per year?
That, that particular data, I, I did not know, um, when you, when you say major storm, is there a criteria that they're using for that?
Yeah, there's a I worked for FEMA also, and there are three levels, there's level one, level two, level three, and a level one storm would be something like Hurricane Sandy, the storm that just came through was a level three, it was the least impactful. It had five and a half inches of rain that fell in an hour and flooded large portions of Bluefield and other parts of the state, but those storms are expected to increase in intensity and frequency. So I would just, uh, I'm sure, I, I believe that you've a background in this, but I just would ask that you would consider or let us know if you could respond to the question. If there, if there has been any other consideration for the increase in frequency and intensity, because we are projected by federal agencies to experience more difficult, more powerful, more intense storms more frequently.
What, what I would say is that, uh, my previous conversation with Mr. Marucci was that we would have further conversation on this. And when we do discuss, I'll, I'll bring this up to him, I'll say in light of the discussion at the board meeting, how do you and I think we should work on this together, so I'll certainly bring that up.
Okay, and that information is publicly available that I was just citing. The other question I had was just referring to a comment you made to one of the other, um, questions, you talked about a good neighbor policy for shifting the cars. Can you just reiterate your planning on that?
Now, I was simply saying that if, if the car is coming in and the car is coming out at the same time, I mean, the obvious, somebody's going to have to back up, and probably ninety percent of the time, it's going to be the car coming out, it's going to have to back up because they have the option of backing up into the, into the parking area, whereas the car coming in will always have the option of backing out into traffic, that's all I was saying.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fantina, just in furtherance of that, the applicant has agreed to cooperate with you and Mr. Marucci with regard to the stormwater management, correct?
Yes, thank you.
I see Mr. Fischinger has his hand up again.
Mr. Mock, uh, I see.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, who, uh?
To mock?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to look Mr. Fischinger up, but, uh, yeah, Peter Mock, one seventy-three State Street. Um, I just had a quick question, uh, and I'm, forgive me if I'm, you're not the right person to ask, speaking as far as parking spaces go, the handicap spot is going to remain a handicap spot no matter who's living in the building, correct? That doesn't shift with the resident, it wouldn't change depending on, on a resident being uh, handicapped, is that correct?
That, that'll, that'll be a handicap space.
Um, so i- in the case where one of the, the building's residence is not a handicap person, we would assume that there would be, so, so if we have eight spaces, uh, and we, eight spaces required for the, for the property, and we have six spaces, so two, two people would have to find another place to park, would that be assumed that would be street parking?
Well, no, and the, um, the planner will talk about this, but we don't believe that we're going to have a, a demand of eight spaces. And that's beyond my purview, uh, the, the planner will be talking about that.
Understood, um, so then my other question would be related to snow removal, and you had said snow would be likely have to be taken off the site, could you describe how that would work?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's fairly standard, um, uh, on small lots like this, because if, uh, if you just plow the snow, and especially if it's, if it's a large snowfall or if it's a series of snowfalls, what eventually happens is some of the parking spaces become unusable. So instead of, instead of six usable parking spaces, we have five or we have four, where now the walkway for the, for the handicap space is no longer usable. Those are not viable options, and the only way to do that is to contract with a, um, with, with a hauler and with, you know, snow removal people that actually put it into a, a truck and take it off the site, and that's done quite regularly, and the applicant has experience with that.
So I, well, try to picture it myself, because I, I certainly see the, the, the properties in our area getting plowed that usually requires one plow, would this be, this seems like it would require more than one piece of equipment and it, at least two pieces of equipment as far as one to put the, the, the snow into and something to you know, like a, a front end loader to put it in there, so, and then the consideration would be for a plow as well, so I'm just trying to figure out how that works, it, it seems I'm just wondering what the practicality of that is for a small property like this.
Well, it's something fairly small like a bobcat, so it can be, it can be taken on the, on the back of the truck, you pull the bobcat off a- and you, you put the material, the snow into the truck and, and you load it up and take it that way. It, I could say it's not unusual.
And for a storm that, uh, like some of those longer duration storms, that would be something they would have to do more than one time at, uh, over the course of a storm?
Very possibly.
Thank you, appreciate your, uh, your time.
Mr. Fischinger has his hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if memory serves, there's a gate in the fence to the property in the west that opens up to their parking lot. Will that gate remain accessible and will the residents of this new building be, have access to the parking lot to the west of the site?
Uh, I'm going to defer that to someone else, and I'm not sure.
I know, you're, uh, you're referring, Mr. Fischinger, to sixty-seven Park?
Yes.
On the west side?
The property immediately to the west.
Right, no, there will not be a connection to the buildings, they, each, each one will, uh, be separate.
So the existing gate in the fence will be removed?
Uh, you know what, Dave, I'm not sure where this, uh, there, there's nothing, I don't believe there's, you're saying there's a gate on this property on sixty-five?
I'm not sure which property has the gate, but I believe there's a gate that allows access between them now.
Yeah, there, there is, um, there's not an intention to connect the sites or share parking, if that's what you mean, I wasn't aware of a gate.
There's a gate between this property and the commercial property on the corner.
Yes, I, I, yeah, I, I'm not aware that there is one there, but there's no intention that they
It's a board on board fence that runs along the property line, and there's a gate there.
Okay, yeah, so if it pleases the board, that can be removed.
My question was just if, if it was to remain and if you would be allowing access to the parking lot through there?
No.
Sounds, alright, that's all I had for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, anyone else with a question?
There's two people with their hands up, Mr. Wagner and Mr. Williams.
Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Fantina, I have a question just regarding, it's just empirically on the site plan, based on the fact that it's a four family. If there was not being sought a four family variance, a, the acreage and the front yard setback, with the challenges of snow removal, parking, the shuffling of cars and outside living area, would those be a possibility for this site? Or would the, or be mitigated?
Well, I, I think that the, um, the, the, the parking access would always be a, a situation we'd have to deal with, even with the one family, um, that's there now, if if, if there's two people live there and the husband's pulling in, the wife's pulling out, something has to give, even the way it is today, somebody has to, you know, wait for the other one. As a matter of fact, the, the drive is not even wide enough now, um, the person would have to pull out into the road. So I think that one, no, there's no, but as I told the chairman earlier, yes, I think obviously the, the obvious answer is that if we had less density, there's less of a parking, uh, uh, demand, et cetera, et cetera, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
So to follow up, Mr. Fantina, if we have proposed six parking spaces, one of them's a handicap parking space. If there's no resident that has a handicap parking permit placard or license, does that mean there's only five spaces available for parking and the handicap space remains vacant in case there's a handicap visitor, is that how that works?
That, that's my understanding, I, I've deferred to, um, the planner, but my understanding is that we need the handicap space and that if it's not a resident, but if a visitor comes in who is handicapped, they need a space to plant, to park.
So is it correct to say then, then possibly there's only five spaces for the residents, if none are handicapped?
No, not, not according to law, Mr. Chairman, the law establishes, it's two separate, um, regulatory schemes. One's the municipal ordinances which establish the parking requirement along with RSIS. And the other is, uh, the Americans with Disability Act, I think Mr. Marucci could probably speak to that better than I, which establishes the ratio of, of parking spaces to ADA compliance spaces. And those ADA compliance bases are counted within the required number of parking spaces or the available parking spaces.
So it makes no difference, in other words.
It makes no difference, they're all counted as one, as part of the parking supply.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
If I may, Mr. Fantina, just as, just as a follow up to that comment, you made a comment before about, um, the parking in the rear, and I just want to follow up with a question. So you've seen the existing condition, you recall when the property was, um, was occupied, there were, to say that there was just two people living in that house is not accurate. Anyone who knows the area knows that it was used by this, I believe, and we'll speak to Mr. Messick about this, five or six bedrooms in that home. This site as it exists was intensely used by the amount of people living in that home, and the planner is going to speak to this in a little more detail. So I, I just wanted to reiterate and let the board understand that, you know, your point of the cars coming in and having conflicts, I believe is a condition that was that it's probably being, being made better by the fact that we're formalizing this parking lot, would you agree with that, Mr. Fantina?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, very quick question, more for the record than anything else. Mr. Fantina, was a demolition plan shared or will one be shared with our board engineer or the board?
We did not prepare, uh, prepare a demolition plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Brown.
Just to, uh, again, clarify, you were just saying earlier in response to the question about the parking, uh, you said, well, if it was a one family, we would still have these issues, would you not agree that the issue here isn't so much logistics of getting in and out, but the actual capacity? That if it was a one family, you wouldn't need five or six spaces and people could comfortably park in the rear?
Well, the way it is, the way it is now in the existing conditions, there's really no place to park in the rear without blocking in other cars. And, um, that's all, except for that, there's no place to park in the rear right now unless you park on the grass.
I thought there was a garage there.
There, there is a garage, um, but you can't really get in and out of that without, the, the driveway is only ten feet wide.
So the garage doesn't function as a garage right now in its current configuration?
It does, um, my understanding is that this property It does, my understanding is that this property has always been used by many residents, though. So that situation has always been there. Whether it's, you call the one-family house or not, there's been many residents, there are many cars, and they've had basically the same situation that we're talking about now for the four-family.
So you're saying, if I'm hearing you right, you're saying there are problems in the parking, you can't really park, there's not enough room to get into the garage. That problem has pre-existed this application, because even though it was a one-family, it was a very densely used building. And for that reason, there'd be absolutely no additional impact by making it a four-family?
I know.
That's your professional opinion?
I didn't say that, no. What I'm saying is that, and I've said several times, that with the four families, with the four units, there's certainly a parking variance, and certainly we would like to have more than just a 10-foot-wide driveway now, but that's what we have. But I'm saying that under existing conditions, we still have a driver that's not wide enough for a car to come in and a car to go out at the same time. And my understanding, based on what people have told me, it's not my own knowledge from what people have told me, is that this property has been used by many residents at a time. So the situation's not that much different than what we would be proposing, that's all.
We're going forward, not backward, but I was just saying, it's not about the logistics of the length, width of the driveway. If it was a one-family house, it's about capacity, you don't need five spaces.
Certainly, if it's a one-family house, we need less parking space, if that's what you're asking, certainly.
But there shouldn't, so there would be less of an impact if you didn't make it a four-family?
If there's a one-family house, there's less of a parking or traffic impact than the four-family, no question about it.
So it is cur, okay, so you've answered your own question, then. It will be, in your opinion, bigger traffic problem, parking problem, because you're going to make it a four-family?
I didn't say it'd be a parking problem, I just said there would be a bigger impact from a four-family than a one-family.
Okay, thanks.
Dave, we're going to speak to Mr. Messick about the number of bedrooms in the current home versus the number of bedrooms, and that may help to answer Ms. Brown's, Commissioner Brown's question.
Alright, thank you.
Can I ask, I want to ask a couple of follow-up questions. Mr. Fantina, do you have any personal knowledge as to what the use of the property was previously?
No, as I said, I have no personal knowledge.
And do you know when the garage was built?
Not exactly, no.
You know, was it built by the current property owner?
Yes, it was.
And is it currently being used as a garage?
I'm not certain of that.
And do you, the existing driveway, is there a greater width between the driveway and the house than what is proposed currently?
There is, yes.
I have nothing further.
Dave, just to follow up on that, the current, is this correct? I'm reading 13.89, and the proposed is 13.4?
Hold on a second there, I think the proposed is 11.8, actually. Yeah, the existing is 13.89, and the proposed is 11.8.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? For the engineer? No? Hearing no one, thank you, Mr. Fantina.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Fantina. Okay, our next witness is Tom Messick, who's going to be providing testimony in regard to the architectural plans.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand, please.
Hey, Mr. Messick, yes. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you just say your name for the record?
Thomas Messick, M-E-S-C-K.
Thank you, Mr. Messick.
Hi, Mr. Messick, so if you would, please give the board the benefit of your professional experience and your education.
Sure, I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from NJIT, I graduated in 1995. I received my architectural license in 1998. I currently hold 35 architectural licenses throughout the country. I've appeared before many boards, I've appeared before this board many times, and many other boards in New Jersey and throughout the country.
I offer Mr. Messick as an expert in the area of architecture for this application.
Any questions, board, discussion? The board will accept Mr. Messick as a professional architect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, Mr. Messick, again, refreshing your recollection here that we are treating this as a fully new plan. You have made lots of enhancements since the last version, but let's start from the beginning and go over the plan in terms of the elevations, your floor plans, and then the materiality that's planned.
Sure, I want to share my screen. Okay, first thing, I just wanted to apologize. I realized that our garbage enclosure is on the wrong side of the site, it should be on the easterly side. So that was an oversight on my part, we've made many revisions, as was stated earlier, and that was one thing that just did not get picked up. Most of the information on our.
We forgive you.
Thank you. Most of the information that's on our T1 sheet has already been discussed with David's testimony. I'm going to skip over the T1 and proceed with A1. We do have a full basement, and I know that was one prior comment, was there was no basement plan. They'll start with the basement plans, we can move left to right. Basement is solely for storage and for mechanical units. There'll be a set of mechanical units in the back of the space, and one up in the front. Furnace for the first floor would be located in the basement, and the hot water heaters for all four units would be located there as well. Moving up to the first floor, we have two units on the first floor, and one of the things that we had done with the plan was, we mirrored the plan from our original design. Originally, we had a ramp that started in the back, and it went up alongside the entire building across the front, or actually, I'm sorry, it was a sidewalk that came down the side, to a ramp at the front of the building, that went across the front of the building to an entry on the right-hand side. After hearing some of the comments, the professional comments and the board comments, we mirrored the plan so that what we could do is create a side entry. The side entry allowed us to create a ramp on the side of the building, well, off the parking lot in the back, and it would shorten the length that people would have to walk down the side to get into the building. So we do have our street entry as well, so if people came in off the street, you could come in, come up the steps, and come into the front door, or you could come in through the back, which I would assume most people would do, is they would come down, come into the side door here, and then they would be into the common hallway. In the front of the building, we have our first unit, it's a one-bedroom apartment. In fact, all units are one-bedroom apartments in this case. We have an office off to the side, we have washer dryer in each unit, our kitchen up in the front with, what we had previously had is we had a window up on the side with the sink, so we redesigned the kitchen so that the window is on a front elevation to give us a better front elevation, and we'll get to that in a moment. Back of the unit is the same thing, another, I'm sorry, the back unit actually does have two bedrooms, because we have the exterior space for the egress windows. So the back unit does have two bedrooms, living area, kitchen off to the side here, and again, a washer dryer. Going to the second floor, the front, again, is a carbon copy of the first floor, where we have a one-bedroom up to the side here, kitchen with window facing to the front, living area, and an office on this side, going up to the back. Again, it's another two-bedroom unit in the back with the living area and kitchen. So last up, now we have the elevation. So what we've done is, we tried to enhance the elevations a little bit as well. So before, this side here was just a blank wall, so we popped in the windows here in the kitchen to give the street presence a little bit more character. We treated the gable ends a little bit, so that it just wasn't the gable ends going straight up into the trim board at the top. Again, our entry flipped, so our main entry is on the left side now. We got rid of the ramp that transverse the front elevation, so now we have just a couple of steps to the main door. And the side elevation, this is the side that faces the driveway, these are our required windows for bedrooms and bathrooms. And finally, the back of the house, again, we have a few windows for bedrooms facing the back, the parking area, and then the side that's in between this property and the adjacent property, again, with a few windows that face out that side from living areas, and these would be in the bedroom. One thing to point out on the site plan, as previously mentioned, we were considering putting our HVAC units over in the side. The adjacent building does have their HVAC units right in the same similar area. And then one question that was brought up earlier, the existing structure did have five bedrooms, or at least five rooms that were used as bedrooms, when I did a walkthrough of that property a few months back. So the existing home did have like five or six rooms that would have been used as a bedroom for the occupants that were previously living in that house.
Mr. Messick, what is the material of the siding? Is this a James Hardy plank?
That's what we were considering using, a cement board siding. As you had mentioned, James Hardy makes one of the products for cement board siding. The trim would be like a white, either aluminum trim or AZAC, depending on availability. Windows would be an Anderson 400 series window. Roof shingles, it would be the better shingles that you can get these days with the lifetime warranties. And we were looking at possibly doing it in the gray color scheme. One other thing I just would share, if you bear with me one minute. We did do a rendering to show kind of what the building would look like with the existing building on the left, the multi-story building here.
We need to mark these exhibits, we need to mark the architectural plans as A2, and we need to mark this exhibit as A3, the rendering.
And I'm going to need a copy of this rendering sent to my office.
Okay.
You can email me a small rendering, this size, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So that just kind of shows the building in context with the existing multi-use building on the left and the existing building on the right.
Thank you, Mr. Messick, going back to the, did you have another exhibit to show?
The only other one I do have.
And we'll mark that as well.
Okay.
There's a view from the opposite direction.
We'll mark this A4.
This would show, the, here's the existing building on the corner, which is built up to the property line, and then our proposed building, along with the building next door, and here in this view, you can see the garage in the back.
Thank you. Going back to the floor plans for a moment, the units all have laundry?
Yes, they do.
Dryers in each unit?
The, each unit would have a stackable washer dryer inside the unit. So we'd have one for the front, one for the back, and that replicates upstairs, one for the front, one for the back.
And confirming there's no living space in the basement or up on the attic floor?
Right, there's very limited space up in the attic. If I go back to my front elevation, the attic, you know, it's not, there's not going to be really much space up there. Once all the structure is built out, there would be no living space planned up there, nor would there be any access to get to it, other than a pull-down stair in the corridor for required access. We have a pull-down stair, you know, fire department requires access to attic spaces as well, so that, take care of that issue. The basement, like I said previously, we would just have a mechanical area. There is no proposed, you know, living down in the basement. We did mention, you know, possibly storing bicycles down there if necessary, that could be a possibility, but there would be absolutely no living space down there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Messick, I have no further questions.
The only hand I see up is Mr. Williams. You're on mute, Chairman.
Williams, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Messick, quick question, first of all, thank you for responding to some of the board and public comments. My question is about the, I just lost my train of thought, holy cow. Give me one second.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, come back tonight, I just lost my train of thought, I apologize.
To Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Messick, I have a question, just based on some of the other applications we've seen, and the other multifamily homes that have come up in town. The exterior tends to blend in or be bland to some extent. I'm just curious, is there any reason that a gray siding was decided on, on a block that has a lot of different character in terms of brick buildings? And I think there's a Tudor that's just down the, just one or two doors down, or catty corner. Is there any reason for this, or is there any flexibility in terms of what you're choosing for siding?
I mean, in terms of the material and the color, traditionally, whatever the homeowner decides, or the project owner decides, we did this kind of in the gray and black tones that are really popular these days. The, you know, I spoke with my Anderson rep a couple of weeks ago, and he said that about 80% of their orders nowadays are the black frames. A couple of years ago, that wasn't the case, but it's just kind of what's on trend currently. Homeowner would obviously have a final say in the choice of colors.
Thank you.
Williams, are you ready?
And Mr. Chairman, I remembered my question. Pointed clarification first, and then a question. Mr. Messick, you mentioned that you did a site inspection of the existing building, and in your opinion, there were five or six bedrooms. Can you clarify which it was, was it five bedrooms or six bedrooms?
There were five rooms that were set up as bedrooms, and then there was one room that the furniture wasn't exactly, you know, in place, so I'm not sure if it was just being used as storage, or if it was a bedroom, but there was like furniture that would, you know, make it look like it was a bedroom. There was a bed, there was a dresser. So in my opinion, there was probably six bedrooms in there. However, you know, legally, may have only had five, you know, bedrooms as, you know, as it was built.
And your, the applicant proposes a total of how many bedrooms?
There would be six bedrooms, though.
Thank you. The question was really, the commissioner stole my thunder. I was curious about where you took your architectural cues from. I understand what the applicant or your client desired, but in terms of looking at the surrounding neighborhood and coming up with a design schema, did you take any cues from the surrounding area? Because I, too, was struck by the amount of, you know, brick used in the buildings in the surrounding areas, as opposed to the one materiality of the building next door to you.
There is a big mix in that area, like you did say, there is brick, obviously, in some of those bigger multi-unit buildings. There is some siding, the building to the left, I believe, is stucco. And then, so there is a wide variety. We had just chose the siding as, it's, you know, a really popular. it it's, you know, a really popular choice these days. It's um less maintenance in terms of uh having to re-point like brick. Um, painting isn't as much of an issue. I I believe it would have to be painted after a while. Um, but um it it's, it looks a whole lot better than vinyl siding that's out there as well. So um, just, that's kind of how we derived that, the material that we did.
Okay, notwithstanding um the client's preference and the variety of um uh architectural styles in the area, as a professional architect, what's your, is, in your opinion, is that the best fit for this neighborhood?
We think, you know, it it still has um residential character to it. It's not, like, we didn't do the big box like all over. I actually just drove through Bloomfield, the the southern end of Bloomfield um the other day, which I haven't I grew up in Bloomfield, but um I haven't been in that area for a real long time. I didn't recognize the street that I drove down. Um, going to high school in East Orange every day. Um, so like, you know, a lot of the the newer multifamily buildings are very boxy. Um, they try to maximize every, you know, square inch of the site with a building. I feel like, you know, our building, it still has your residential character. It still looks like a home. It doesn't look like, you know, a box uh multifamily building.
All right. Well, okay, thank you, Mr. Messick.
Brown has her hand up.
Just uh, just to jump in here, the applicant is willing to work with Mr. Williams with regard to some design improvements that you may see fit. You know, in terms of looking at that, he does, uh, they do note that the building to the left that they own is in the gray colors. It's recently been renovating. There is um a a high-end side, I think it's a cedar impression siding on the top. Um, that does tie in that siding in the home to the right is also siding, but they're you know, very much about design aesthetic and they're happy to work with you uh coming up with a palette. Thank you.
A quick question for you, sir. Uh, I think it looks very nice compared to the first version. Especially the treatment on the front. And I like the color scheme, but I appreciate other people's points of view. Um, did you give any consideration to architecturally pulling the garage into the look and feel of the of the four family you're proposing? Is there any, is a any idea of how to make that look unified?
Um, we actually didn't discuss that because the garage is existing, but we could have a further conversation about you know, making the siding match the color. Um, maybe, you know, I'm just trying to remember what the trim was on the garage and I don't, I can't recall.
I think the garage is currently green and the applicant's willing to match it, to to match the home.
Yeah, I mean, the siding can be painted to match, so um, you know, that would tie both the structures together.
And in your opinion, would that then blend better with the single family homes that are around the corner on hillside there or?
It would definitely help to to blend the the two buildings together. Um, then it would look more cohesive as a project as opposed to two separate, you know, a garage and then a a different, a separate building.
And contextually in the neighborhood, it does wrap around then to the
Correct. And you can see from Edgewood through the parking lot on the adjacent property, you can see both the garage and the uh the proposed structure.
Is that the street that's the the first intersection there? Is that Edgemont? Trying to read it, because you can see the garage from when you're walking the dog down that street.
Correct, yeah, through the parking lot, yes, most definitely.
Yeah.
Edgewood Road, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alvarez has his hand up, I see.
It's, one thing we talked about a couple of months ago was whether you had done actually historical research. And have you considered any extra detailing to make it feel to to get, to give the historical feel? Because that bottom building still looks rather modern to me. And this is it's, it, this is a historic district. Have you thought of de- extra detailing to make it more historical looking and not so quite frankly, modern? To blend in with the historical aspect of that neighborhood?
We did, uh, based on your comments the last time, um, and I, oh. I clicked the wrong button. Uh, share my screen one more time. Um. Okay, so we did look to add some, you know, updated, you know, or upgraded architectural features such as like the shutters, the um, the details up in the gable ends to give it a little bit more of a, you know, historic feel, but yet, you know, keeping it a more modern building as well. Um, it did look, um, you know, through some records that I could find, this particular property didn't have any historic um photos of the building. Oddly enough, the building next door, or I guess maybe it was perhaps an older building next door. There was a photo of that and it showed basically the building that, you know, we're looking at. And it just it didn't look much different in that photo um from what it does today. Today, it's um basically just aluminum siding and the the brick facade. Um, so, you know, we did try to take some of those comments into account, like to add some of these details, some wider trims, you know, here. Um, just to, and then um like, you know, like a freeze board going across just to add a little bit more architectural detail to the building. Um, so it wasn't as like, you know, I had mentioned before, a lot of the, you know, multifamily residential you see today, it's just primarily like stucco on a, on a box pretty much that, you know, fills up the property. So we did try to keep it in character with, you know, a home feel and, you know, keep it yet modern, you know, as that's what, you know, many clients and people are looking for these days.
Thank you.
And Mr. Messick, a- as you know, on the foundation, there is brick that integrates that brick. It's hard to see on the bottom, but you do show brick on the uh on the foundation.
That's correct. So our brick up to the um, the first floor line would, I mean, our, from grade to our first floor line would be brick. So we would keep that brick element. Um, you know, the older homes, uh, you know, the Victorian homes that were built back in the eighteen hundreds, they did have, you know, horizontal platform siding. So, you know, we were trying to keep that too with our, you know, uh, cement board siding. We keep the same, you know, horizontal siding look. Um, you know, so like we try to tie in is, you know, some details from the past, but yet, you know, not design it as a eighteen hundreds, you know, Victorian building. Um, you know, a lot of the projects we do today are more modern. Um, and they're getting even more modern by the day, but uh you know, we try to keep as many historic elements as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Marucci has a question, Mr. Chairman.
I, I see.
Just a couple of, just a couple of questions, Mr. Messick. Um, on your sheet eight, on your sheet eight three, the ele- the, the west side elevation doesn't show the side entrance. You show windows, but you don't show the side entrance.
Um, I don't know if that, that was definitely an oversight. Um, if you give me one moment, I just wanna see if.
I would further mention, you also don't show the ramp, although it is, it does appear on your uh overhead view. So I, I, until Mr. Marucci made a comment, I was just gonna leave it.
I just, yeah, I I realized that and I don't know, that was for sure an oversight. Um.
Well, the, the, the reason I mention that is because that section is actually indented on the first floor.
Correct, because.
Be able, in order to be able to have sufficient access for um, for handicapped accessibility. And again, it's not shown on the elevation drawing. Obviously, you'll correct that.
Yes, for sure. Um, I was just trying to.
I just have, I just have one other que- question with respect to the one-bedroom apartments. You do have offices in there. Can they be used as bedrooms?
Um, they, I mean, people can do whatever, you know, they do once they get in. However, there is no closet, there's no window, so that's why they're not a bedroom. Um, however, you know, we there, it's a small space too to begin with and um we discourage the use of a bedroom, obviously, because it's not compliant with.
Well, I'm looking at the closets and all you have to do is reverse the doors and and the closet will be the, in the office series, but I'm only bringing it up because I, this, again, it's just a question for the board to ponder, because you are offering offices there and legally, probably not, because they don't have windows, but they could be second bedrooms. Just a question.
I, I realize that and like you said, you know, they're not going to be marketed as such, but um it would be very hard to determine what people do once uh they get in there. I would just like to share my screen one quick moment. Um, this, um, this is the CAD file, and so I don't know why this did not translate the PDFs that everybody had received. But this shows the the ramp coming up the side, um, and the um, the cutout, you know, where the door would be recessed in this cutout. So that would enable somebody, a disabled person in a wheelchair to come up the ramp. You would have the proper clearance and turnaround at the top of the ramp to be able to access the door with the proper clearance on the um, the side of the door. Um.
Mike, is this something I need to mark and receive? I mean, I don't know.
Yes, but yes, it was shown during the, during the hearing.
All right, so this is gonna be, it's gonna be A five.
What I will do, Nicole, is I will make a new PDF and send you the PDF.
That would be great.
And and just one final question, Mr. Messick. Access to the basement is only from the the interior. There's no other access to the basement from outside.
That's correct. Uh, let me pull up my, um, we have our stairs here. So in the back area here, there's a door that would lead down to the set of stairs to the basement. That's the only access to the basement is from inside the space.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Thanks. And and Mr. Mr. Sorry, Bill. Mr. Marucci, the applicant is also willing to stipulate that those will be rented as one-bedroom units. Um, he does find in in other properties that the office space, especially now with the pandemic, is something that's important to have a small, little defined space. But uh, they would certainly agree that's not the intention, that they would rent, they would only be rented as one-bedroom units.
My job is just to inform the board that.
Of course. Thank you.
Just.
I have a couple of questions. And Mr. Marucci covered one of them in terms of the accessibility to the door um going in the side. But are the bathroom, obviously, the second floor units are not handicapped accessible. Are the bathrooms on the first floor unit designed to be handicapped accessible?
They would be uh adaptable for handicap needs, yes. So uh, you know, meaning that we could change out a tub to a shower, uh, the the toilets, you know, could have grab bars as necessary. So um, you know, they would be you know, adaptable for handicap use if necessary.
So initially, when it's built, it would not be, but if a handicapped tenant came along, you could ad- adapt the bathrooms to.
That's correct.
Then the attic space you indicated was not habitable. How how high is the roof at its highest point? How high is the ceiling at the highest point in the attic?
Um, just bear with me one moment. I'll see if I can get you that. It would be a little under eight feet from the uh top of the attic floor to the underside of the ridge.
So about how big an area would have, say between seven and eight feet in height?
There you go, bear with me one more minute. It's approximately an area of eight feet. Would have a, a ceiling height of seven feet or more.
You say eight feet, you mean eight square feet or eight feet by eight feet?
It would be eight feet by the, um, because it's a hip roof. Uh, it would be eight feet by like twenty-five.
So it it's big enough to, I mean, it could function as a room by size. Is that correct?
Um, I guess technically, because a minimal room would be seven by ten, sure, I guess, you know, by code reference, uh, that would qualify as a room size, but there's no access to it. Um, you know, other than a pull-down stair.
I just, I have friends who have a drop-down stair that they use as a room, use that as the access, but.
Does the code official know about that?
Don't know.
Now he does. Any other questions?
I have no further questions.
Any member of the public have a question? Hearing and seeing no one, last call. Anyone? I don't see anyone.
I don't see any hands either, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Messick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Messick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next witness is Frank Miletto, a professional planner.
Okay, Mr. Miletto, raise your right hand. Oh, let me find you, hold on. There he is. Uh, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You're on mute, Mr. Miletto.
So help be God.
Okay, just state your name for the record.
Frank, middle initial D, Miletto, M I L E T O. Fourteen Beaver Brook Drive, Long Valley, New Jersey.
And you're on as a planner?
I'm, I'm as a planner. I've been a planner since nineteen seventy-four and continuously practiced that profession in my uh practice. I've been accepted as a professional planner. Many zoning boards and planning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, Superior Court, and the appellate division.
Thank you, Frank. I offer him as a qualified professional planner.
Any discussion, Ward? Board accepts Mr. Miletto as a professional planner.
Okay, Mr. Miletto, you are um very familiar with Bloomfield and very familiar with this street and this property. You have um studied this. I understand you have an exhibit to share with the board, but I will um, I will let you present as you see fit and um I'm here to help if you need help sharing the screen with regard to the exhibit.
Okay. Well, first of all, I've checked with the ordinance of Bloomfield to uh see what can happen. And the the biggest thing on this application is the fact where it is located. Um, when I bring up the, my exhibit, you'll see that this building is in a canyon, I gotta call it, of multifamily nineteen thirty-two, twenty-eight pre-war structures, multifamily eight, ten, twenty, no parking, not one. I'm not proposing that we're gonna do that, but I am gonna tell the board and I'll I've told them before and I will please insist on it. Parking is a function of bedrooms, not units. You can have uh, one-family home like we have now with six bedrooms. It's gonna have a similar impact as the six bedrooms that we have in our current plan. We have two two-bedroom units, which is a total of four, and two one-bedroom units, which is a total of six bedrooms. Assuming that every bedroom has a car, everyone in the bedroom has a car, six bedrooms requires six parking spaces as a practical matter. I know what the RSIS standards are. I know what the city of Bloomfield ordinances are. But I insist as a practical matter, and not only have I been a planner, but I've been a zoning officer for the city of Clifton for eighteen years. And my experience in those jobs tells me that because you have a bedroom, you don't have necessarily a car. When it comes to utilizing spaces, I can tell you incidents that I've seen where people put a piece of plywood on their bathtub and use the bathroom as a bedroom. That's ridiculous, but of course it could happen. That's up to the zoning, I mean, the zoning officer, and it's up to the landlord. A landlord, a good landlord will see who's there. He will rent the units with a lease that explains what you're getting. In my opinion, if I were writing the leases, if it was my building, the one-bedroom units would be permitted one parking space. Each. The other two-bedroom units would get two parking spaces, even though I don't know that they would both be used. Each bedroom have a car. Bloomfield has a lot of public transportation, as you as you know. Matter of fact, the master plan recognizes. That in the areas where mass transit is available, that the density could and should be increased. Beyond the normal density specified in the ordinances. What we have is a perfect example of this. When I bring my. Um. Picture up. You'll see that we aren't truly in a canyon of multifamily dwellings. And that goes to the planning issue. It's maybe zone one family. And I think I know how that happened. I can't testify to it. All I know is then I, when I was zoning officer and the city manager in Clifton. When we rezoned properties, if we had no other use for it at that time, they went to one-family R ones zoning. So that the city had control over it, that they wouldn't be using it for other purpose. So that that to me is what we have here. It's a little section of Park Avenue. And the around surrounding area that are some one-family dwellings. But if you go beyond that, within the two hundred or four hundred foot radius, you will see. Multifamily, big ones, no parking, and still it exists. And 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 that goes to my other testimony on parking. Parking is a self policing issue. If I rent the unit and I don't have parking, I'm not gonna rent there. Why would I look for a problem if I gotta rent a unit that doesn't have parking? Makes no sense. And I think people are sensible today. If you got two cars, don't rent a one one-bedroom unit. You you go and find where a spot is that you can park your cars. That being said, I think we should bring up our exhibit, and I think that speaks a a thousand words about what I'm talking about. That we've got to look at the regional picture of it. The regional picture of this area is multifamily. There are some ones and twos in there, mixed in, but if you look at my exhibit, you're gonna see. There's a large amount of multifamilies in the area. And I they they exist and they are no issues. Beyond what is there. If you live in one of those units and you have no off-street parking, you don't rent there. You use public transportation, Uber cars, buses, trains, there's all kinds of ways, bicycles. To transport yourself around.
Frank, before we go to the exhibit, and I think um Nicole, where I I think you're not able to share your screen?
No, I don't know how. I'm sorry. I'm technically challenged on that issue.
You have many other talents, Frank, so don't worry about that. So we thought it was important to show the aerial view of the street, but I do want to ask you a question. It it came up, a question came up of Mr. Messick about the architecture and the orientation of uh the street, I think it's Edgewood Road. And you know, when when you're looking at this, in your opinion, is is there is there any? Relationship to Edgewood Road as it relates to this property, as it relates to sixty-five Park, in terms of where it's located?
No. Park Avenue is your view. When you drive down Park Avenue, that's the view that you're gonna get. If you sneak a peek down the driveway, you'll see the garage in the back, yes. And I have a lot of things I'd like to add my architectural opinion about while Mr. Mosick was being Messick was being cross-examined. One in particular is if you're gonna go to historic uh preservation issues and so on. White paint did not exist in colonial days. They couldn't get it. It was too expensive. The only one that could afford it was the White House, believe it or not, the government. But all the other buildings in 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 the era of colonial days were in gray, dark brown, no paint, and so on. And in my opinion, this this project has that touch enough to meet the historic issues. Uh it's got divided light windows. It's got brick along the bottom. It's got the gray color, black shutters. You rode by, you ride by, it's true historic houses, and you will see gray, black shutters. Divided windows and some brick. They're not all brick. Couldn't afford it. Brick was too expensive at that time. The only reason the multifamily ones in Bloomfield right now. Or made out of brick was because it was during the depression. And people worked on a time and material basis, and brickwork was a good product. That was affordable. You could not afford it today. It's 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 uh it's very labor intense. Plus finding ma- you know, mechanics that can do it.
Sure.
That being said.
I'd like to.
Enough architecture. I just had to get that off my chest.
That's quite all right. So why don't we bring up, Nicole, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay, now I have to see how we can do this.
I gotta learn how to do that.
That may make two of us. Hold on.
You did it before the meeting.
Yeah, uh okay. Okay, can everyone see that?
No.
No?
No.
You know what? Hey, Dave Fantina, can you try sharing? I don't know why it's not coming up. Can you try sharing your screen? I emailed this. I emailed this to each of you. So this would be the planning exhibit that was emailed to you earlier today.
John, I can do it. I just need a minute to pull it on to my desktop.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know why that didn't work. While while he's pulling that up, we'll call this is a planning exhibit and uh prepared by the planner. And we will mark this, I guess, as are we at A six, Nicole?
That's correct, and you're gonna have to send me a copy.
Yes, we'll do.
Okay.
While we're waiting for that, can I also ask Mr.?
Hold on, we we lost Mike. They, oh wait.
All right, I'm back. Could I just ask Mr. Harrison to formally put on the record who he represents? I don't think we did that for today's hearing. I know we did that back then, but we didn't do it today. So if we could just do that, that would at least make the record.
I represent Victoria Larson.
At what address?
Twenty-one Edgewood Road.
Thank you.
Well, I'm gonna suggest we take a break while this technical problem gets resolved.
Thank you. I just need a minute.
That would be wonderful.
All right.
All right.
We'll take a ten-minute break. We'll be back at um nine thirty, please.
Okay.
Board is back in session. Uh, we were trying to bring up an exhibit, I believe. How's that working out?
Yeah, we're we're ready. We have the exhibit.
I think we have it, Mr. Chairman. Frank, this better be good, this long-awaited exhibit.
That's.
It's better be good.
Did my best.
All right.
That's not it. That's part. That's the first page.
Yeah, that's okay.
Down. There you go.
All right, very good. All right, Frank, take it from here. Explain um this, and I believe we marked this before we went off on break as A six.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
This is a uh an aerial view. Um I don't know how it was taken. It's on Google Earth. Uh they. Take it from a drone or a plane. I don't know, but it does show what I was trying to explain, that this project. Sixty-five Park is in the middle of a canyon of tall buildings. To the west, to the south, to the east are all. Big, multi-story apartment buildings with some with parking, some without. The newer one to the east, not a west. As you can see, is a a modern building, not historic for sure. Beautiful building. It just wasn't meant to be a a. Historic building, but all up and down Park Avenue across the street from our properties, multifamily, big buildings. Few and small ones snuck in between. It's a mixed-use building, uh area. There's no question about it. And to build a one-family home in the middle of that canyon and expect to have children there and so on. Would be, in my opinion, a bad piece of planning because and and that's what a one-family would be. A one-family dwelling would be used for family, a family of one, two, or three kids. Of course, that would impact the town of Bloomfield within the Board of Education, but that's not a reason for not having one-family homes. But the lack of open space for a child to be brought up in is not a in is not. Not meant to be at sixty-five Park. And that one room, I must tell you, in the office of the one-bedroom units, has no windows. And that is absolutely against the fire code, the building code. I was a construction official for eighteen years. They would never get away with that. And in order for the landlord to be sure of that, he would put it in his lease. That that would remain an office as a stipulation.
I think this is important, and this is what I really want to get to, is I believe that this, and I'm very familiar with this area in the neighborhood, including Glen Ridge. And I think this is really the crux of this case here. Th- this applicant is extremely adept at building. Single-family homes, apartment buildings, condominiums. And when looking at this, but looking at this property, and you're a professional planner and you have a license in professional planning. And and while my client doesn't have a license of professional planning, I've put him up against any planner, no offense to our planners here, yourself and uh. My friend, Mr. Stack here this evening as well. He would never build a single-family home here. The 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 decision tonight is really this house that has existed for many years. And the demand would not be for a a couple or a family to buy that house. The demand would be for someone who would keep the house and rent it, and that's what we've seen. And we can put the the client on to give testimony to this for the last twenty-five years. His family's owned the building next door for forty-five years, and that's what they've seen this house has been. Rent it out, buy room, allowable by the code. Um and that's what we've seen. We have not seen single-family homes in this area, and and I really want you to stress the uses in the area and what we're looking at as the alternative. So so that's something I really want you to focus on here.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the point.
Next slide. Let's look at what this area is in more detail. This is across the street, um seventy-two Park Avenue. Go ahead.
Yes. And that's being used currently at by the church, and they are, I believe, I heard that they made application to use it as a uh. Childcare center. Right now it's a nursery school residential mixed-use. Um now they wanna, I it's like they're gonna. Bring bring more of it into the commercial use. As you can see, by the air conditioner on the third level, that that's an occupied third level. Our third level has no windows. There's no access to anything but storage, if anything. From a from a fold-down stairway. So our building will stipulate and remain. Two-story building with with a third-level attic for storage only if if the landlord permits it. Um this the basement of our building is large and empty. It's a perfect place for tenant storage. Whether it be bicycles, extra furniture, whatever.
All right, uh let's go to the next slide, Tom.
The next slide is a picture across the street from our property at sixty-eight dash seventy Park Avenue. Count the stories. Look at the mass of that building. Look at the fire escapes. Those are later installed fire escapes. They were not built with the building. These buildings did not have a second means of egress until they learned, the fire departments learned, you have to get out of there. And that's where egress windows are came from, uh the lack of fire escapes. I can tell you that this building, the mass of it across the street from this, nobody with a right mind. Would build or buy a one-family home in that neighborhood. And it continues down the street. Go to the next slide.
Before you go to the next slide, I believe Mr. Mr. Wagner had asked questions relative to density, and we kind of punted to you. So just point out on these buildings in the surrounding area. I I it's on the screen, but just just so the record's clear, what is the density on each of these properties?
I um.
Go back to the prior screen. Let's start with the prior screen.
Yeah, I'm looking at the screen. Oh, you just got rid of it. The other one.
I didn't see.
Go to the next one. The density is a hundred and twenty-one units per acre in this building. And that's a larger lot. Property description is forty-four apartment units in that building.
This Mr. Miletto started interrupting. It's George Hoggan. How are you this evening?
Yes, hi, George.
Ju- just for clarity on the record, as you go through the density, because it's not mentioned in this exhibit, can you just also point out the zone district? In which the property is located, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
But George, as you know, zone lines are invisible. This is directly across the street from our property. And as I indicated, the. Ours is in a one-unit apartment, I mean, one-unit uh zone. And I believe, it's my opinion, that that was left that way because there was a one-family home on it. And when the master plan was designed and and decided upon. They tried to keep it within the uses that were there existing. There was a one-family home there in the thirties or whenever your ma- the Bloomfield Master Plan was developed. Or the re um examination even. You you kept what was there existing. These these units were built thirties, forties during the depression, after the depression. And that's why they became brickwork, because brickwork was cheap and easy to do. And it lasted. It was it was a good material. To build a building like that today is four times any conventional construction. That being said, we move down the street, up the street.
Okay, next slide.
It's not just this building. If you's is the next one is sixty-four Park Avenue next to that, again, across the street from us. Density, a hundred and five, almost a hundred and six units per acre. On a bigger lot, no parking. None, and I know number fifty-eight down the street. Thirteen units per acre on a thirty-seven and a half by one eighty. I don't wanna dwell on the issues of variances granted and history of the building and how they got to be where they're. This exists in the neighborhood, and our unit is a mild uh application compared to what's already there. Twenty-four Jersey Street, twenty-five unit apartment, two hundred and five units per acre. And it goes on right down the street to densities of the condominiums.
At at this point now, we're on the others. We're on the same side of the street.
Same side of the street. Yeah, the odd numbers are on our side of the street. The even numbers were across the street. Forty-nine, fifty-five, forty-four Park Avenue. They are condominium. That's only a form of ownership, but the densities are fifty-one, fifty-two units per acre. Way above what our proposal is. Uh sixty-three is directly next door to us, and that was the lot to our e- east, I believe.
Yes.
And and uh that's one. And and that's one that has sixty vehicles in the backyard. They rent that backyard for parking, obviously to the people that have no parking in the neighborhood and other businesses. I don't know. We didn't do a study of it. It's existing and it's not part of our application.
Frank, on this property, as a planner, is it your opinion that this property would be considered a mixed-use while while the home, I believe, according to the records of the township, it is single-family? There is a commercial operation here with regard to the parking of cars. So so it would be your testimony that this house, which is adjacent to the subject property, is a mixed-use property?
Absolutely. Yeah, the dwelling itself may be one-family, but with a parking lot for sixty vehicles is certainly a commercial application. And it's not a bad thing for the neighborhood because they do have parking provided.
No, I didn't say it was bad. I just wanted to get from you what your opinion.
It's a mix. No question. It's a mixed-use. It blends with the rest of the neighborhood. That is a mixed-use neighborhood. High-rise, mid-rise, low-rise, one families, sixty parking spaces. It's a it's a hodgepodge of uses. Now we come to our site, next door, and that's a commercial building. And it has fifty-one unit density per acre. Exists. There's nothing more to say about it. It's there. It has these darker colors.
The only other thing I would point out to the board there is they were asking questions about the materiality of the adjacent property. Mr. Williams was asking those questions. So you can see a little bit of what I was describing before about the brick on the bottom and the siding and the grays and the and the black shingle roof. And I think some of that is what motivated the applicant to create the gray with the black shutters and the black roof in that traditional yet updated look.
Correct.
All right, here we are. There's the big crescendo. This is the subject property. So where does this now in relation to the others?
Right. As you can see, the existing house to the right of this in the inset picture has outused its living, its livability, I'll put it that way. And we are proposing to demolish that existing building and then put in our new multifamily four-unit. In my opinion, a very modest application for two one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units for a total of six bedrooms in the entire building. You can assign one parking space to each bedroom, and that would still be too many. There won't, there shouldn't be two necessarily, two cars for every two bedrooms. It's it's just a residential site improvement standard that had to be somewhere. It's my opinion, the landlord could control that by assigning parking spots, and I would recommend that. Two spots are rec are assigned to the two-bedroom units. One-bedroom unit gets one parking site spot assigned to it. If you've got more than one car, don't rent there. It's as simple as that.
And the other the other thing that I wanted to ask you, Mr. Miletto, is the the Bloomfield is so very attractive for this, for these type of units based upon the transportation. And, you know, when you look at the the master plan reexamination for Bloomfield, there's a lot of talk about that, and that also goes for Glen Ridge and the building that is there. We didn't really highlight that because it's not within this township. But, you know, speak to this property and its proximity to transportation.
There's public transportation in the vicinity of it. We're just outside, I think, of the transit zone. But it's still within walking distance and and within distance, reasonable distance to use a bicycle, walk within within the transit district for multi uses of public transportation.
We have another, so two more slides, I believe, Tom. Okay.
Yeah, that's the existing dwelling and it's it's it needs help. It is, it's it's outlived its usefulness, in my opinion, and therefore should be replaced with a new construction, which is what the applicant is doing. He's 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 a good developer, knows what he's doing. And it's not rocket science. It's 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 plain use of the proper use of the property.
And you you mentioned that there's public transportation here, but there's also public transportation by way of train in the neighboring community that is within walking distance.
Yes, part of the transit district. Trains are available.
This property may not be in the designated Transit Village. It's very close, I think, you know.
Very close, a block away, a block or two away, yes.
Correct. And we know this from the tenants that live in the building adjacent.
And the master plan speaks to that. An increase in density is the right thing to do in the transit zone. Use it.
So there there are many, you know, there are many single-family zones within the community. And there's some lovely single-family streets that are in the zone that are characterized as primarily single-family. You've just outlined this for the board and and it's it's very egregious in that the this, the character of this, in your opinion, as you've stated, is overwhelmingly multifamily. And and the reason that we didn't highlight the property around the corner is there's no articulation. They're not linked whatsoever. The properties that are in the rear of this are not linked. Edgewood is not linked to this property. And I I think your testimony was that that was the reason we didn't share anything on Edgewood. When when this when this property is developed or as it was developed in terms of the size of the property, the height of the property, the 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 look of the property serves to, seems to me, as you've said, as a transition from the commercial building
Right word.
up to this this severe change. I mean, it's quite severe. You know, it's not like it's just two stories. You're saying these are four and five-story buildings. So to put a to put a another single-family home there, I I don't, do you see any anyone that would build or seek to move into a single-family home wedged in between all this?
It would not be used or or purchased for that purpose. It would be used, in my opinion, as a rooming house like the old building was. It's it's just, that's what happens when you build a home in a neighborhood like this. One-family use is not the proper use for that property. There's no room for it.
Okay, well, I think that is it on the exhibit, and I will let you provide your testimony with regard to the justifications for the D variances and the density variance, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Right. Well, it's a it's a it's a very simple D variance for sure. And the issue is that the that the use will not create any substantial, matter of fact, will create no detriment to the zone plan, the neighboring properties, or the zoning ordinance of Bloomfield. It will be only positive. It will be the proper density use in blending with the neighborhood and will be certainly a good transition use between the one families behind us in that one-family area and the multifamilies across the street from us, down the street from us, next door to us. It's 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 the right way to use the property, and it has its special reasons. It's in a mixed-use zone. And the special reasons, it fits, it fits with the with the use. The off-street parking, although it's six and under the residential site improvement or the the use of number of units to determine the number of parking spaces is, in my opinion, not correct. It would should be number of bedrooms. You have six bedrooms, you have six parking spots. It's as simple as that. It's a practical issue. As far as any of the variances, the bulk variances, it's my opinion that they are C-two variances, that the benefit of this application and these variances that are shown on our application outweigh any detriment that they would create. If you look at the setbacks of the street frontages, you'll see that the house to our left is all the way, or the building to our left is all the way to the front. Property line, the one to our right is set back about twenty feet or thirty feet. We averaged it out at fifteen or so feet to to give the streetscape that conditional use and conditional setback. So as far as coverage, property coverage, it's a small lot and restricted. You're, we are applying densities and square footages to a conforming lot. This is a non-conforming lot. This lot is smaller than what's required in the ordinance. If it was a full-size lot, we would be either at or lower than the densities required. However, because it's a smaller lot and we're applying the density requirements as a big lot, it doesn't meet it. And it's it's a particular situation that does no detriment to anyone. None of the properties will be, in my opinion, negatively impacted. The issue that was brought up by Mr. Harris about where the drainage and so on was an engineering issue. It's a challenge, there's no question. But I think between Mr. Marucci and our civil engineer, that issue will be solved before a construction permit is issued or won't be issued. It's as simple as that. Even though zoning may be approved, if engineering doesn't approve it, they don't get a building permit until they satisfy the requirements of the engineering and building code. So that being said, there is a stopgap issue, if you want to call it that, that that could be used in place to restrict use if it's not handled, the drainage is not handled properly. We're not going to bury anybody in the water. That being said, that's my opinion. This use can be granted without substantial detriment and should be granted, this application.
And with with regard to the benefits of the community, you mentioned that there are aesthetic benefits. And you mentioned that there are benefits to providing housing stock with appropriate connections to transit. In addition to that, you know, with regard to the with regard to the density here, so with regard to the D-five, do you believe that this site can accommodate the density the the four units that we're proposing on this site, that the applicant's proposing on the site?
No, no question. It has met the off-street parking, in my opinion, the practical answer to that. And it will do, as I said, no harm. Those densities are not going to be an issue once constructed. That's my opinion.
Well, I appreciate and respect that. I do not have any further questions of Mr. Miletto, but I imagine that the board and Mr. Harrison may.
Board questions. I see Mr. Wagner has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have a few questions, if you don't mind. I'm just curious, Mr. Miletto, does the density today meet the existing requirements, given the site, the size of the site that you mentioned that is is non-conforming?
It's it's slightly over, but it, as I said, that density can be granted because the use does satisfy, in my opinion, the requirements of of the parking and of the density of the use.
Sorry.
I think you're saying is is it
Existing site.
No, the existing, it's single-family. So anything over single-family, that's that's the crux of the D-five variance that we're seeing.
It's a misnomer.
Can I just interrupt? Can I just stop and interrupt right here? Mr. Miletto testified this is an undersized lot. In fact, this lot's almost twice the size required in the R-1B zone. It's almost, it's seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six square feet in a zone that requires a four-thousand-square-foot lot.
For a one-family home.
Correct.
For one family.
That's it's a zone that requires a four-thousand minimum square foot lot, and this lot is seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six square feet. Also, the density, by my calculation, is not twenty point, whatever he showed on his twenty-point-six-seven. My calculation of the density based on the seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-six square feet is twenty-three, twenty-two-point-three-eight dwelling units an acre. I don't know if that that comports with Mr. Fantina's calculation because he said it was a little different than twenty-point-six-seven. Twenty-point-six-seven is based upon a lot that is that is measured at one fifty-nine by fifty-three, but the lots are regularly shaped.
Yeah, I think I think you're right.
So I think it's twenty-three point twenty-two-point-three-eight dwelling units per acre. I just want to pin that down.
I think you're right, Dave. That's probably what you're looking at because I think the math was just on three-point-one, point-one-fifty-nine. Although the the purpose of this was to show the great disparity between the density. But we appreciate that that twenty-three-point-three-eight, I think, is the correct number.
Yeah, I have to, whatever the resolution says, I got to put it in. So I got to put it in actively. So I need to determine. Okay.
Mr. Rubin, I calculated also it's twenty-two-point-three-eight, as you said.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we agree with that.
So this is an oversized lot. So so Mr. Wagner, your your question should be premised on it being an oversized lot rather than an undersized lot.
Okay, I was basing on testimony. Thank you. Okay. No, that was it was the same point I was trying to to get at was that the current the current lot, the current use is measured in the lot, is still within is is still, it's not over the density of the lot.
Yeah, density for, there is no standard governing one and two detached single-family dwellings by statute.
Okay.
So you so you don't look, you know, so if you want to build a house on an undersized lot, a single-family home on an undersized lot, you don't look at density. It's not a function that's that or a characteristic of single-family detached homes under the statute.
Okay. But then for my next question for for Mr. Miletto was that, so based on understanding the density is not for the one-family but using it for a multifamily comparison, you had mentioned that you measured the the density of of the lots that have multifamily. But and there was only, I think there was only one or the other ones that you measured the the density on a on the matching zones. Because all the other, you were comparing this zone to the RG zones, which are adjacent. But, you know, this, you know, there are other properties that are along Park Avenue that are still in the R-1B zone. And that's, that's the zone we're in question right here.
You're right. It's a mixed zone. It has all of the above. It was a one-family at one time. Then the zones, I'm sure, got changed across the street to multifamily. Poor planning, in my opinion. There should have been some buffer between one-family homes and the monsters that got built across the street. But that wasn't a consideration, I guess, by the board at that time.
I don't know if there was a board at that time.
If there was a board, you're right.
Yeah. So but my last question, I apologize for taking too much airtime here. The you had mentioned that the properties along Edgewood were not considered in terms of the planning review. Does this property abut or adjacent to any properties on Edgewood, as far as you know?
The back is, the back lot. Back lot does join those properties, but it doesn't, it doesn't affect them. The garage building, of all things, is a big buffer between the one-family and anything forward of our lot.
So in terms of structure and drainage, neither of those
Drainage must be taken care of, must be taken care of. I'm sure it will be, or they're not getting a building permit. I can see the gleam in Mr. Marucci's eye. If this drainage doesn't work, it ain't going to happen. It's as simple as that. You can't, you can't have a flood. You can't design a flood house.
Understood. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
George.
Mr. Miletto, how are you this evening?
Fine. Nice to see you.
Always a pleasure. Good to see you. Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions for Mr. Miletto. Most of them are just to get the record straight. Mr. Rubin addressed the issue. Mr. Rubin addressed the issue of the undersized lots, so I think we clarified that this lot's actually larger than is what what's required. There was some.
If you're building a one-family home.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. It's it's a over the size for a one-family home, yes.
Got you, okay.
I agree. There's no question about that.
And then there was some mention about a mixed-use district. I understood you to mean there are a variety of uses in this district, but you would agree that it is a residential district. It's not.
Correct, correct. By by the book, by the ordinance, it's a one-family district.
Okay.
But that's what these boards are for. These zoning boards, adjustment, because there's weird lots, weird situations, which is what we have, very special.
I would definitely agree with that uh for Mr. Miletto and for the board. This is a um very unique application, given the land development pattern. So I want to tease out a bit more information because of the unique circumstances. Mr. Miletto, as as, can you just recite the release one more time so that we're all clear on what exactly the release being sought are based on the latest submission?
Well, certainly the D one variance, that's a use that is not permitted in the one-family dwelling zone. And then we had a raft of other density, coverage, um parking, uh other bulk variances as well. And as I indicated, they're all C two benefits outweigh any detriment that they would create to the neighborhood or to the Bloomfield uh community.
Mr. Williams, would you like me to put them on the record?
I- i- if you wouldn't mind, I believe the site engineer did, but I just want to make sure that we're all clear about.
Sure, yeah. So we spoke about the um the use variance.
D one.
We spoke about the D five density variance. The, we have a minimum front yard variance, um whereas twenty feet is required, and we have eleven point three three feet. We have a uh variance for the maximum building coverage, whereas twenty-five percent is required, and we're proposing thirty-six and a half percent. And maximum lot coverage, whereas sixty percent is required, and we're proposing seventy-seven point, I think that's six or eight, eight percent.
Is it, is it seventy-five point seven or seventy-seven point eight?
Uh I'm showing seventy-seven point eight on the latest plans by prepared by Mr. Fantina.
Okay. Ju- just so you know, my understanding is that it was recalculated to a lower number of seventy-five point seven, but I'll double-check my my.
And Dave's on, Dave, feel free to jump in here just to verify if that I'm looking at the most recent plans. And then lastly is the um variance for parking, whereas eight spaces would be required under RSIS and six are being provided.
And counselor, I appreciate that. Is that the de minimis exception from the RSIS standard?
The waiver of the de minimis exception, correct.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Um Mr. Miletto, in terms of the, you made mention of the variety of building types in this section, along the section of park, both in the zone district in which its property is located and across the street in a different zone. As a professional planner, is there anything that precludes the development of the permitted use in this zone district? And that's kind of a segue into my next question, but I'll I'll stop there for a second.
Well, precludes it to build a one-family dwelling there?
Correct.
First of all, it's an oversized lot, which if you wanted to subdivide it into two lots, it's a long, deep lot. It doesn't work as far as the shape is concerned, and you'd be building railroad-sized homes there, which in my opinion are not in keeping with the zone plan of the city of or the town of Bloomfield. Um it it's a, it's a unique piece of property, and it needs to be dealt with that way, and that's what zoning boards are are all about. And it's my opinion that we have met the challenge of the proper use of the property. The density is a little higher than normal, but much lower than the vicinity, the buildings in the vicinity. So it's a, it's a hybrid, no question, a hybrid use. And it's a, it's a, it's a zoning board decision. One-family house would not survive there. I don't believe it. It would become something else. Nobody would run and raise their family, a child, and children, in my opinion, in that in that zone um with these canyon of multifamily dwellings and the shadow of these multifamily dwellings.
And and that's an issue that I pondered certainly in my review of this application. Are you familiar with the Eagle Court case? It it has to do with being zoned into inutility? And 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 I asked that question because as I reviewed this, one of the bits of information I think would have been helpful, and I'm going to pose it as a question to you, is would not this application be served by some testimony about the marketability of the site from a expert in the field of real estate or market analysis that backstops your opinion that a one-family could not be built? So I'm not sure the board heard testimony as to why that could not happen. Notwithstanding your comments about the canyon nature of the the street, but I don't know that any testimony was offered that supports that, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but no testimony was offered that supported that. In your opinion, would that be helpful to this board?
I only worry about doing that kind of testimony. It gets into the uh economics of the use of that property. And you know, as you know, economics should not be part of good planning. Um I, it's a matter of fact, but it's not one that's been accepted as a good reason uh to develop property because it's not economical. And that's why I stayed away from that testimony and you're right, it would have been something more positive, but I believe I stay away from that one. I said like I stayed away from the issue of school kids in a one-family home, when it costs fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars a year to educate a kid. If you have two kids in a one-family home, that house is a loser as far as the community is concerned. It costs the community money to be there. So that being said, those are all economic issues, and I think that's not the way the the zone plan. I think I showed the disparity between using as a one-family and the uses all around the property are all high-density, high-density, three and four times as much as ours.
So I'm bouncing around a little bit here, but you made the statement that about the canyon and opined that most, if not all, the buildings were taller, but I know in your exhibit and from my um field observations, there are uh uh indices or indicators of buildings that are akin to the height that's being proposed here, right? The church, for example, the property abutting the church, the other side of park on this side of the the street. So there are other buildings that are similar in scale. Um but to your point, it's a hodgepodge. Is that, is that correct or fair?
Yes, it's a good word, hodgepodge.
Hodgepodge. Um given your testimony analyses, does the, and this is also something that I struggled with or looked at carefully in my analysis. Does the master plan offer any re- any recommendations to rezone this portion of park? And if not, why not? Because you know, you characterize this as a simple variance, but it's still a D one use variance. And I searched, I couldn't find any recommendations, notwithstanding the current land development pattern, in the plan to rezone. Can you speak to that a little bit for the board and what your opinions are about? Why, given the canyonization of the street, the master plan does not recommend changing?
Because they recommend using the same uses that were on the property. That's, that's how I believe that one-family zone existed and continued to exist is because of the old house was a one-family, supposed to be a one-family house. And therefore you zone, you make your zones not to create non-conforming uses by making it uh multifamily. And then the one-family homes now become non-conforming and can't add a a an addition to it because it is now in a zone, high-rise zone, that don't meet the 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 requirements.
So what's, what's the purpose?
When the reexamination comes through, in my opinion, the the fact that the developments of these lots across the street and the lot that we're talking about have changed to multifamily, that leads me to believe that the reexamination by the planning board would be to recommend multifamily dwellings, but because that's the majority of the uses.
So that, so I'm glad you stated that, because, well, let me back up. A, I'm glad you stated that, because that's where I was going. For the board's edification, in your opinion, what's the purpose of a reexamination report?
Just that, is to relook at the zoning as it existed previously, six years ago, ten years ago, whatever the the cycle is that they have uh established. And bring it up to the existing uses, the the majority of the existing uses, so that they eliminate non-conformities and non-conforming uses.
In your reading of the Bloomfield reexamination report, are there any instances where the reexamination report acknowledges changes in land development patterns and existing conditions and yet recommends a rezoning to reflect the changes and not the existing uses?
I don't, I didn't do an in-depth study of the reexamination to see that or not. I'm sure they did both. In some areas, they wanted to maintain it, some areas they've changed it. Um but I couldn't speak specifically for you. And that's typical of all reexamination um master plans that the board would consider sometimes changing it and sometimes not, depending on their judgment.
But you're comfortable that the enhanced quality of proof has been met for the D one use variance?
That's my opinion. It's a special piece of property, and it there's, there's no negative impacts, in my opinion, to anybody in the neighborhood. And and the positive criteria is certainly there to the using the property to its proper density.
So now.
As as compared to, not the zone, but as compared to the neighborhood.
Okay. I'm moving away from density for a second.
Mr. Williams, may I jump in just one second, just to maybe offer this, because you asked a question, I'm not sure it was a hundred percent answered with regard to why hasn't this community looked at this lot or the lots in this R one B zone and said, why don't we zon it? And I I think the testimony that the board heard this evening is that there's really nothing left. It's really not a priority, so to take a look at one single-family home, it probably wouldn't draw the attention of, you know, a a planner. It's it, it's really this, a- as Mr. Miletto's testimony and the exhibits show, this is pretty much it. The house next door, a- as Mr. Miletto's testimony brought out, is a commercial operation. It's a parking, it's a business that is in the business of renting parking spaces. Um and it happens to also have a dwelling unit on it. And every other property that he pointed out, aside from the church, which is a a beautiful church that's existed for many years, they're all very large, multifamily, very dense properties. I think I I would offer that as maybe a reason why it just hasn't gotten any attention. And I I think Mr. Miletto's testimony is that it would be most appropriate as a transitional use to be in some form of multifamily zone.
Thank you. And does does municipal lands law permit the argument of transitional zones as a proof?
So I I think that i- it's offered to show the board, and we fully acknowledge legally across the street, a- as Mr. Wagner points out, and as you pointed out, w- we, we're not saying that's in this zone. I mean, tho- those buildings, they're they're likely were, and my friends on the Historic Commission have told me they're were very large. I'm president of the Little Falls Historical Board, and I appreciate that. There were very large Victorian homes there that were torn down to make way for this, much like in Little Falls, where our garden apartments are. Those baity mansions were torn down and they put up garden apartments. Here in Bloomfield, they put up much more density, um and why it was allowed, we don't know, pre-existed the zoning code. So we're not closing our eyes to that. We're just saying, we also can't close our eyes and not look across the street. It's just, you know, like contamination, contamination doesn't know lot lines, zoning really doesn't know lot lines. If you look, you know, and I've been to this site many, many times before, over many decades. If you look up and down that street, I think our testimony is that the character of the street here is multifamily, and a one-family home sticks out like a sore thumb. And and I think that's, that's anecdotal, but I I think that's what the testimony is.
I appreciate that, counselor. And again, I was only asking in response to Mr. Miletto's testimony about the canyonization of park and the um depiction of the multifamily along the street. One could argue then why is the master plan reexamination report not say that from uh one corner to the next on this side of park should be rezoned to multifamily? Because that's what exists, and that's the trend and proximity to the train station, but it didn't, so I'll I'll address that more in my comments, but I was just trying to tease that out um from Mr. Miletto's uh response. So I appreciate what what you just said.
Thank you.
In terms of the parking, um I'm not sure I heard the proofs for the de minimis exception, but let me ask a few questions. Um Mr. Miletto, how c- close are you to public transportation, and can you identify what that is? Are you referring to the train station, to bus routes? And in either case, is where are they in proximity to this site? It's kind of a rhetorical question, but I think it would be helpful for the board members to hear that on the record.
The 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 ordinance is clear that there is a transit zone not far from our property. Did I measure it? No, but it's very close. It's within walking distance. And the board and the planning board and the mayor and council have determined that that is a transit zone. And to qualify for that, obviously, you have to have mass transportation. And we do. We have a train station not that far. We have buses, public buses going back and forth on the main streets. And then we have um uh public, other public transportation of uh private buses that go, as I said, through municipalities and transport them to various other locations.
Let me ask you a different way. Would you agree that there's bus routes on Bloomfield Avenue?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm going to rephrase the question or recontextualize. Would you agree that there are bus routes on Bloomfield Avenue?
Yes, there are, there are bus routes on Bloomfield Ave, absolutely.
Are are you aware there's a train station in the adjacent municipality of Glen Ridge? And if so, about how far away is that train station from your property?
No, I didn't do that study.
Okay, okay. Um
And and I, again, when I mention another town, I get scorned by those open, but this is Bloomfield. Don't talk to me about Glen Ridge.
I think we can call up the Google Earth. I I think it's right across Bloomfield Ave. I I mean, again, I don't want to give testimony here, but it looks like it's about less than a thousand feet from this site. It's definitely a walking distance. I've walked it.
Yeah. I I would agree with that. Um uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm almost done. I think two more questions. Um
We we can, the architect texted me, we can show it on the map if you like.
Okay.
We we can, we can point it out and uh what, you know, ask you finish these questions. Tom, if you could call that up and you could show, the bus lines go right up and down Bloomfield Ave, and you can show that. And I think these are important questions, because I think they give justification as for the parking variant, so I appreciate.
Sure, I'm going to share my screen once again. Okay, so here, uh, our site is uh here, our site is like right over here, right where the arrow is. Right here um is where the Glen Ridge train station is. So it's um, you know, you walk to the end of park and you walk up one, two, three blocks and the train station is there. Uh like, you know, um John had mentioned, it could be approximately about a thousand feet, you know, from the train station to John had mentioned, it could be approximately about a thousand feet, you know, from the train station to, you know, the, uh, the residence. And then Bloomfield Avenue, the main part runs right here. So you're literally maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet off of. Bloomfield Avenue, and I'm sure there are many bus stops with a, uh, east and west on Bloomfield Avenue.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
So in the context of the de minimis exception. Couple of questions. Well, I'm sorry. The, in your. Are you aware of any intent of the landlord? You mentioned the property next door, if you're facing your site to the right. Having sixty parking spaces that are presumably to rent, is it? Do you know if the applicant intends to satisfy some of their parking supply off-site by renting there? If, if you know.
Uh, for sure, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, it's my opinion that he wants to keep the two pieces of property independent of each other.
No, I, I think, I, I.
Because that would certainly restrict the use of that property with encumbrances of the lot in question.
So, so, uh, Mr. Williams, I think you're asking about the property to the east, correct? The property not owned by our client. Our client.
That is correct.
In some, in some.
I'm sorry. Sixty-three, I believe, is.
Right, in some form of, in, in some form of common ownership, the pro, the, uh, the applicant owns sixty-seven. Been in the family for many, many years, decades. That property has generous parking, but that's not, we're not speaking about that parking this evening. The, the, I, again, the, my understanding from knowing the, the area is that many people in the neighborhood park there. And we don't have an arrangement with that owner. Um, however, I suspect if there is a need, we don't believe there will be a need. We think we have adequate parking on the site. But if there is a need, that's, that's an option, much like there are some other options nearby for people to park off-site and walk to their dwelling.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
So I, I would just, this is perhaps inappropriate, I'm gonna make a statement. I'm, I'm still not sure I heard the proofs for the de minimis exception. But that is important, in my opinion, because my next question is about the D5 variance. Uh, and as your chairman, I promised this in my last question. Um. Mr. Miletto, can you just tell the board the standard of proof for a D5 variance, which will inform my final question?
Well, that's a, that's a sort of a coventry case, uh, application. Does anything other than a D1 gets to the issue of uniqueness of the property? Specialties of the lot and then, and the area. So, um, there, there's clear case with the, um. Uh, what was the case I just mentioned? Uh, the, the, um.
You mentioned coventry.
That's it, I'm sorry. I had a senior moment. Coventry case. Uh, that they said that exactly is that uniqueness showed it as special reasons and so on. You don't have to meet the strict, uh, requirement of a use variance.
I, I, you know, my understanding is that the standard for D4 and D5 is that. You, the applicant and their professionals have to demonstrate that the site can accommodate the extra density. But a commissioner asked earlier, and it might have been our chairman and, um, another commissioner. Then it doesn't appear that the site can accommodate the additional density because there's a parking relief attached to this application. Can you just tell the board how the site does accommodate the, the D5 variance? I mean, how the site does accommodate the extra density? And you may have mentioned, and I probably missed it. I think that'd be helpful just to get that on the record.
Well, as I indicated, although the RSI standards are there. They don't speak to this kind of unique condition, in my opinion, of one-bedroom units. That have two parking spaces. Um, it doesn't make much sense to me. So I said that, that's a unique situation, one bedroom, one car. And that would, I would be, that would be a condition of the lease, that you can only have one car if you're gonna rent this unit, period. And that's controlled by the landlord. So, uh, although it's a technical, um, issue, um, of, of off-street parking. From the RSI standards, the RSI does recognize that in urban communities. Like Bloomfield and in these kind of conditions, exceptions can be made to the, to their standards. And they say so. If the board finds they can grant a variance, they should. If you were in Long Valley, no. You got eight acres of land to make parking. You don't need that. But in, in urban communities like Bloomfield and surrounding areas, you, you just have to do that. You have to take into consideration, um, that, that issue. And, and, and the RSI standards has language in that, in it, just like that. That allows zoning boards, as you know, to grant variances from it. In my opinion, this is one of them that, that deserves that kind of consideration. It's that close.
I, I thank you, sir. The, uh, board secretary is hitting the wrap it up button for me, so I've overstayed my time, but thank you.
If, if I'm just, and I'll be real quick. So in Coventry, so.
Mr. Mr. Hold on, slow down, one second. We have another application here, another applicant, and it is now ten thirty.
Right.
I'm just wondering whether as a board we can allow those people to go home because we have yet to hear from our experts.
Um.
And we only go to eleven.
And, and so I'm not, I don't even know if we're gonna finish this tonight. So that's, I'm sorry to interrupt him.
No, no. Other applicants being here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I defer to you.
Twenty-nine Park, is there a council for Twenty-nine Park?
There is no council for Twenty-nine Park. I am the applicant and property owner.
All right, Mr. Young?
That's me.
Would you like to adjourn to a future meeting, uh, rather than stay to the end?
Uh, I think it's a safe bet to adjourn at this point.
Mr. Young, before we do that, can I just ask a question? Do you have, do you have a planner, uh, that, a licensed planner that's gonna support this application?
I currently do not. I had actually reached out to Mr. Williams to discuss that and, and one other item. Because we actually worked on that application together as professionals a few months ago. Um, I planned on presenting my, my case as a licensed architect for the site plan on the architectural drawings. And, and use personal testimony in regards to the D1 use variance, but I was going to speak with him beforehand about that.
I, I think you should speak to the chairman.
And, and Mr. Rubin, if I may, um, through you to Mr. Young, apologies. I got your message only as I've set it up for this evening. Uh, perhaps we should dispense of the potential conflict issue. Mr. Rubin, I don't think there's a conflict. Mr. Young and I worked on a project, um, that was wrapped up a couple of months ago, I think, uh, but.
I'm worried about the conflict now. It's kind of a waste of time.
Okay.
I just want, I just want to resolve whether or not the board will hear this application without a licensed planner. Obviously, it can't be you. Um, so, so we'll worry about that other issue later. I don't want to waste anybody's time. Let's just deal with the issue of whether or not this application could be heard without a planner.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Young, for a D, a D1 use variance, uh, in my experience, the board has not granted D1 use variances. Without planning testimony in the last twenty years. So, uh, you know, if you come, come before us without that and are turned down, you can't come back for the same application.
Yes, understood.
So my question is, do you most likely are best served by having a planning planner to testify?
Understood, and there's a very, very good chance I will have a planner when I am fortunate enough to appear before the board.
And so we can adjourn you to, uh, December, and you would. Be moving on to a rather busy agenda or?
I mean, right now, we can only adjourn to, um.
Yeah, we can't do anything else.
Uh, right, to December, because January, we have reappointments. I don't know what's gonna happen.
All right.
Let's just put everybody on December and we can make judgments in December. I think that's the best thing to do. And, and you know what? We'll try to, we'll try to get a handle on this early so that we can deal with everybody upfront. Rather than making you wait if you're not likely to be heard early, Mr. Young.
Sure, understood, and I appreciate that.
So we'll adjourn. There'll be no notice necessary. You extend all time constraints?
Yes.
Is there any member of the, member of the public here regarding Twenty-nine Park Street? I hear and see no one. Uh, this will be the legal notice of the adjournment. To December ninth, twenty twenty-one, seven PM. May I have a motion to adjourn Twenty-nine Park Street, please?
So will Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second.
There Wagner, seconds. All in favor, board, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed. Twenty-nine Park Street is adjourned to. Regular meeting of December ninth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM. No further notice is required. Thank you, sir. Sorry, we didn't get to you.
No problem. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night.
Sorry, Mr. Young.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Better. Mr. Chair, you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Um, yeah, I'm sure everyone wants to talk about the Coventry v. Westwood case at ten thirty at night. I'll be very brief. And so I, and I think that, you know, the applicant doesn't have to show that the site is particularly suited for more intense development. We have to show that, like Mr. Williams says, that the site can accommodate any problems associated with the D5 variance that we're seeking. And, and I think the testimony that he gave and, and that we're giving tonight is that the units that, um, we have. Two one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms, that we believe that the site can accommodate the parking on the, on this property. However, I've had an opportunity to speak with the applicant, and I just want to, I, I just want to put this out there. The applicant, um, would offer, and we'd have to do a little bit of design work. The demolition of that newly constructed garage. And what that would do is that would provide us with eight spaces. Again, we have to engineer this and show it to the board and we'd come back and take a look at it. But, you know, I'm hearing recurrent comments from the board about that. And while we believe that the spaces work and this applicant never wants to build something, that would not work. This is, he's in the business of doing this forty years. However, if the board feels strongly about that, even though it is a newly constructed garage. And it does provide some, um, barrier between Edgewood and, um, and the site at hand. So I'm not sure that, 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 that the neighbors or, or the, the objectors would even prefer this. But it could allay some of the other issues that the board's having. So, um, I, I mentioned that because we had a little break to sort of talk during the break.
Mr. Harrison, if I may, I, I just want to make clear that the board cannot or should not lose sight of the fact. That the, um, appropriateness argument for a D5 variance does not eliminate the site suitability requirement for the D1 variance. So although the argument may be that, yes, site suitability is not appropriate for a D5, there's still a D1 variance here. And so the court, the board cannot ignore site suitability.
Sure, I don't disagree with that.
And I certainly agree with that. It's clearly what the case law says.
I figured you would.
Right?
We're in agreement. So with, um, anyway, with regard to that, um, that, I just wanted to offer that up as a, um, you know, as a potential. And, you know, as we are approaching the eleven o'clock hour in twenty-five minutes, it doesn't seem likely that, um, that we will finish here. Um, I did want to offer that up and get the board's reaction to that.
As long as we're on the subject of, uh, of density, Mr. Miletto, uh. Essentially, this, this looks like a, a four-family house. Um, and we were told that the, um. The, the density and the arrangement that's required for parking and so forth preclude having green space for recreation outdoors. How do you justify not having green space for recreation outdoors with, with a four-family house being proposed?
I just think, said that if, uh, you built a one-family house there, it would make sense to, uh, to do that. But I don't think it makes sense to build a one-family on this site. Um, the people that are gonna rent this unit are gonna be, um, single. Senior citizens, maybe. Not, it's not a family-oriented type of living in an apartment, uh, house. Unless you go to the, to the extremes of Brooklyn and other communities like that. But, um, I don't think it's a, a, a use right now that would, uh, satisfy. The developer, uh, in, in developing a house.
Living there.
One-family dwelling, I'm sorry.
The folks living there, you, they would find no use for some outdoor green space or no, no use for a barbecue or anything like that? Is that what you're telling me?
Let, let me tell you, in my opinion, a barbecue will be there tomorrow. The day after it's constructed, there will be a barbecue on the side of the garage, in the front of the garage, in the garage. Uh, there'll be activity on the site. There'll probably be a, I don't know, a basketball hoop. Put on the back.
Basketball hoop, okay.
You know, well, issues like that, you know, there, there, there are recreational issues that you could use in an urban situation. Which is what we have, unfortunately. It's, it's not a suburban lot, it's not a suburban zone. Um. It, 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 it's, it's a mixed-use area that, uh. I can't, I can't explain what else would be, uh, used for, um. Certainly not a one-family use.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna chime in here. I appreciate the chairman's questions. I think it's a really good question. And, you know, we have the experience of the property next door and that property, I think it's a ten-unit, don't quote me on that. But that property has no green space as well, and some of the residents there have been residents.
Excuse me, I have to interrupt you guys one second. I have to interrupt. We have to, I need you guys to take a one-minute pause.
You're, you're. That's Bob from Channel Thirty-Five, so he needs to take a one-minute pause.
I just need, we need thirty seconds.
Okay.
Thirty seconds because you've, uh, exceeded our recording capacities.
Okay.
Would you mind if I made a little point that might help an issue?
Okay.
You're good.
We can't talk yet.
We're off the record. We're off the record.
This is a, this is formal, but.
We, no, 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 no.
Doesn't matter.
Okay, okay, sorry, okay.
You're live on the air, so you, you, you don't want to talk. So just, you're good to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you, everyone. So, you know, I, I, I appreciate the chairman's question. It's a question that comes up on a lot of the.
I'm directing the questions to Mr. Miletto, so you really can't provide testimony, sir.
No, I, 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 what I'm trying to, to focus on here is that the experience of the applicant on the property adjacent. That they, the, the answer is that they use, they use the, the parks, uh, in this great town. And that, that, that is something that, um, I see just from a practical standpoint. I only offer that up based on our experience of the adjacent folk.
Brown has a question.
You're good. You want my answer?
Thank you, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Miletto. Go ahead and answer the question that was posed to you, and then I'll ask my question.
The question was about recreation area, an open space and, and the use of the land for, other than parking. It's my opinion, it will have uses put to it. It will be a barbecue there. There will be a, uh, possibly, as I said, a, a basketball hoop or whatever. Um, to, to use that lot when it's empty and it will be empty from time to time. So, um.
Okay, so picking up on that.
Give you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Brown, your question.
Alrighty, uh, picking up on that, I think the, uh, this feeds into some of my questions. You testified earlier that it was a very tight turnaround, that it was not easy to use the existing garage. Because of the tight turnaround, there's not enough parking as there is because there's only five spaces. As opposed to the eight that are required. And the front lawn is only eleven feet deep. So how would they be putting a basketball court or a, even a barbecue in the middle of, on the grill of their car?
No, it would be in the parking area.
Practicality of saying that you would have, uh, on the long, the side of the house?
No, it would be in the parking area. In an area that would be the turnaround area between the garage and the parking spots that are existing. And and I don't know if that just threw an idea out of what might be used for um.
Okay.
It's like.
Yeah.
Even though it.
The 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 owner will not permit outdoor barbecues. We're going to stipulate that in the resolution.
Okay, well. I think the question was more about having some kind of an outside. Experience, but to the second question. Uh, Mr. Miletto, you said a few times that. It'd be your recommendation. That the owner stipulate that only people. That had one car and could rent there. And that you wouldn't even allow people with 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 one what?
The one, the one bedroom units, yes. I would recommend you rent it to people who have only one car and that would be a part of the lease.
What is the constitutionality of that? To tell people they can't own property.
Wait, now we're getting into constitutional law and I don't know. I don't know what.
Well.
Why it would be unconstitutional. You know, we stretched that poor constitution to death nowadays.
I'll let the board attorney answer that.
It's a serious question that I'm directing to Mr. Miletto because he said it several times. So I just.
He he's not qualified to answer a legal question um with respect to constitutionality of it, but I would talk to the board attorney. Uh, it would, this would be a contract, so there would be a contract between that, but I I appreciate.
But can you contractually tell people they're not allowed to own property?
Oh, to own.
Ms. Brown, I think we, I think we should move on. I mean.
All right, we're moving on. We're moving on to my next question. Thank you. Good point. So um, the second question I have is something that came from the first. Round of conversations, but I don't believe we've discussed it here, and that's the setback. So but for the corner building. That is right up on the edge of the sidewalk, all the rest of Park Avenue. Has a. Pretty consistent setback. And I think it is the twenty three feet or whatever the norm is there. Um. You would be entitled to a shorter setback legally because of. That one building that that's closer, so it brings the average down. Um, from a planning point of view. Is it the goal? In your opinion, would it be better to adhere to that normal setback of the rest of the streets? So you have that. Wide boulevard look and feel and the pre-war building vibe with the other buildings intermixed that we see and the. Blending into the neighborhood around the corner. Because by bringing this building forward. Aren't you then eliminating the opportunity that that one corner building, which is the only one that's up? On the end of the street? That that's kind of changing the whole dynamic. In other words. Is that? Um, a prudent thing to do, considering the entire streetscape. Has a boulevard feeling and then you're kind of encroaching on the corner.
Well, the the corner lot actually is the obstruction. It goes right to the street line. This building would be a transition to the other deeper lots or deeper setbacks. And it averages out. You don't necessarily have to abruptly at that particular piece of property. Start meeting the setback of all the other ones on the street. You 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 gradually get up to the other existing buildings.
We talked about the legality of how you don't have to do that, but I'm saying from a planning point of view. It's the only building that's up on the sidewalk. So wouldn't it be? Beneficial for the long term beauty of the community to stick with the standard. Setback so that you have that streetscape? And then in terms of contextualizing it, you go around the corner and then there are those other. You know, um residential, single family homes.
I don't know that. Good planning necessarily says you have to line every house up on a street. Uh, like soldiers and that would be good planning. Good planning. You blend with the area, you push things where they should be. Uh, if you got to push a house back a little bit further to save a tree, you do that. You can't just say. This has got to be in line. It's just not good, in my opinion, not good planning. It's very.
Isn't that what setbacks are about? I mean, that's.
It's what setbacks are about. Well, they're minimum standards. They're not the maximum. They're minimum.
But I mean, conceptually, that's why we have setbacks.
If you had a, if you had the choice, you you you're permitted to exceed that front yard setback. If you wanted to do that. And that still would be okay planning. Nothing wrong with that.
Oh, okay, okay.
The diversity of that, it's my opinion that this is a blend of of setbacks and it's a softening. Of the streetscape. It it's done in good planning. Uh, there's communities are developed that way. Fair Lawn, for one, as Radburn said. They're all over the place. They have. A a different design. Um, it's good planning. That's really progressive planning. Although it was done in the thirties and forties. It doesn't have to be a straight strict setback situation to be good planning, in my opinion. Diversity is nice sometimes. And I think that this. Pushing it back halfway between the two. Is a good blend. It doesn't abruptly go to a boulevard necessarily. It's not a board. It's just a little wider street. Those avenue setbacks. It's my opinion.
Is that it, Ms. Brown?
Chairman, I don't know what time we're going to finish, but before we do, I think we need to swear Mr. Marucci, and I think there's an issue that he needs to resolve for us. I think we need to know whether or not. Um, he would be comfortable. With this board approving an application. Uh, under the circumstances of the current. Stormwater design. Or whether or not he is going to ask that before they come back next time, that they figure out a way to get the water. The overflow out to the street. And I I I think we need to know that because if he wants it designed appropriately before then, it should be put on the record so that the applicant knows what they've got to take care of.
But we'll put Mr. Miletto on pause because I don't think we're done with him, but all right.
I don't either, but I don't, we could go and be eleven o'clock and I didn't want to lose the opportunity to at least get this record squared on this issue.
Understood. Mr. Marucci, raise your right hand.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Marucci.
Thank you, Anthony.
Mr. Chairman and and members of the board. This application. Began a long time ago. I've written three reports. My first report is actually dated. May fifth, twenty twenty one, so it's quite a while ago. And I addressed my drainage concerns at that point. They propose a dry well and and Mr. Fantina and I have had uh conversations about this. They do propose a dry well. But I don't know what the percolation is at this point or the permeability of the soils in the ground. They've had months to do the soil tests and and at least get that information to me so that. We could see how much of the um ground will, you know, will will absorb as far as drainage goes. As far as the design that's before you tonight, I I told Mr. Fantina that I had concerns about that. Because there's no way I'm going to allow an overflow pipe to go towards the neighbors to the rear. But again, until I see percolation test permeabil- soil permeability test. I don't know what the drain is going to be. The other side of that is. The board can approve the application if they so desire to approve it, subject to to the per uh percolation test. And then it'll be up to the applicant's professionals to give me a design that I'd be comfortable with. And I will tell you, if I'm not comfortable with it, they will be coming back to the board. So until I get that information, I I think it's. A a upon the applicant to to maybe do those tests now before it gets too late for the winter also.
Mr. Marucci, I guess the question I have for you and 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 on behalf of the board, and I'm sorry if I'm intruding, is. You know, the board's going to be faced with a dilemma. I mean, there is case law out there about. The lengths which boards can go to approve projects without having some comfort level over the over the feasibility of stormwater and other utility services. Um, whether this crosses that line or not, I'm not going to get into that debate because I'm going to ask you hon- honestly to tell the board. Whether or not you would be comfortable with a subject to approval or you would prefer to have the information before the next meeting.
I would be. Comfortable with subject to approval again because once I get the information. That's going to, that information is going to depend on how large is of of a facility that they're going to build. And what the overflow is going to be. And again, at that point, they have to satisfy me and if they don't. Then they will come back to the board.
But if they can't satisfy you.
Well, but that's what I'm saying. I I again, my 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 initial report goes back to May. They've had. Months to do these percolation tests if they wanted to and and uh, you know, we, you know, we're. We're just going around in circles.
I know, but but my, I guess my question to you, and I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, but I think this is really important. Because there's law out there about this. Mr. Marucci, I I mean, if they can't. Design a plan that's comfortable for you, what's the point of them coming? What's, in other words, don't we need to know that first?
The problem I have is, if I may, the problem. I have is that the applicant's attorney just came up with a possible change now. That they may even uh remove the garage and that's going to change the drainage also. So. It it's really a incumbent on the applicant to to give us this information.
That's that's, and my question is that can the board really approve this without the information that you need? That's my question to you.
I don't think so, because again.
Please let me just continue my dialogue with Mr. Marucci.
I think at this point. I guess not, because again, now they've come, I've heard this evening that they may come up with an alternative plan. And for this parking lot that eliminates the garage, and I don't know if that's what they're going to do or not, so.
I, Mr. Ms. I I just think that this is one of those applications that. You know, what what concerned me as the lawyer is writing a resolution that would leave that kind of. Question open, you know, with the overflow pipe shown on the plans heading towards the rear of the property and everyone agreeing that's a bad thing. But no alternative plan being provided to the board. I was uncomfortable with that as the board attorney. And that's why I've raised this issue because. I have to write a resolution that I feel that the board. That I can defend on behalf of the board, should they approve this application in whatever form it may be. And and I'm concerned that I that I would have a hard time doing that, given the the current state of the stormwater management plan.
Obviously, I cannot make comments until I'm sworn in as you asked me to the.
You just were.
Well, I did swear you had.
I know, and 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 I know, and that's my point that. That that I didn't, I didn't feel comfortable making comments before because. This case is more about planning than it is about engineering. You you know, the engineering can be accomplished in more ways than one. But when it comes to drainage, my my job is to make sure that the drainage. Does not adversely affect adjoining properties. That's the bottom line. And and like I said, I've been waiting for for months for these tests. Uh, you know. I, it again, it's incumbent upon the applicant. I I I I could do it either way. Uh, but it's that. It's at their peril. If they wanted to wait.
Mr. Chairman, I I would just think it might be beneficial to the applicant from to hear what Mr. Harrison's position is on this so that they know what risks they may be encountering going forward.
And without getting into the one variance and the proofs, I mean, one of the variances they are seeking is lot coverage and that is directly related to stormwater. My understanding of their proofs is they're doing that based on a C two variance where they have to show. The benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh any detriment. Clearly, the potential detriment is the impact of stormwater and without having. Stormwater plants in effect because the applicant said they're not doing the plans that have been presented that show the inlet next to my client's property. I don't think there's any way the board can properly evaluate whether the benefits from the excessive lot coverage. Outweigh the detriment because you have no testimony as to what the detriments are because the stormwater is an unknown at this point.
If I could just make. One more comment, Mr. Harrison. If the applicant decides to re. Move the garage, that could change drainage in in a different way. Right now, as was. Testified, that lot is very, is flat. And if the garage is removed, the elevations can be raised so that the overflow will definitely come out to the street. I'm not here to design it for them, but again, uh, they've got to make a decision as to what they want to do.
So i- if I, if I may, and thank you, Mr. Marucci. I appreciate all the comments and we acknowledge that we are going to have to design this plan. We routinely do this in in this town and other towns where it is subject to approval and the ultimate control that you have is in the resolution compliance. So in the resolution, if we don't meet the standard, and it's a pretty high standard, I know Mr. Marucci for twenty five years. Of getting the Gis approved and keep in mind, there's no stormwater management on this site whatsoever. Right now, and we're going to design a system that's going to meet the approval of. Mr. Marucci, and I view that as a very high standard. So. From our perspective, you know, we would prefer not to have to do this now, but um I leave this to the to the board to decide.
That's why I raised it. I leave it to the board to decide. This is something that the board needs to, you should know now. Because I don't want to go through this and at the end of the day, have the board tell you, go back and design us a stormwater management plan after the next meeting. That's a waste.
I I would like to see at least. A feasible solution, if not the detailed design. I've asked before, what was the solution to the overflow and there wasn't a good solution? I think it was suggested that the parking lot be allowed to flood and when the water reaches a high enough level, it run down the driveway. Uh, I would ask Mr. Marucci if he thinks that's acceptable. But uh, right now, I I don't see a clear path. Forward where the board could make uh an informed decision to approve or disapprove this application, considering the stormwater component. So. I I, in my my opinion, as one member, I I would need to see more.
As uh.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and uh uh Mr. Ruben, I would have to agree with uh uh Mr. Chairman as well, that I would like to see more and uh this is. Also with Mr. Marucci's uh uh idea, if there are changes that do occur on the property, such as removing the garage. That too, you know, will have to be known beforehand and therefore what's going to happen with the water flow, which could change for the positive, actually. But we would, I think we would need to have that information.
I would concur with with both uh Mr. Prince and and Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else, Ford?
I agree with you as well.
Is that clear enough, Mr. Rubin?
Yeah, I just, I I thought it's eleven o'clock and if we didn't do it now and we came back and it became an issue next time, we would waste a whole hearing and I just didn't want to have that happen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rubin.
And I think that it might affect the planning testimony too, you know, or finishing up with Mr. Miletto. He might be able to like dot a few i's and cross a few t's with respect to. Uh, his testimony if the if the storm order is satisfactory resolved. And the changes to the plans and may result in changes to the plan, the change to parking configuration that might also affect his testimony.
So we've reached eleven o'clock. We'll uh put Mr. Miletto on hold until the next meeting and we'll continue with Mr. Miletto. So the plan of action will be to uh. Continue with Mr. Miletto, hear from any other witnesses that the applicant may have or or not have, I don't know. Uh, after we hear from, we, after we're finished with the applicant, we will hear from the objector and any of the objectors' witnesses. Uh, that Mr. Harrison may wish the call. Following that, we'll hear from the board's experts, the board's planner, the board's. Traffic expert, the board's engineer, and we'll hear from the public if any member of the public wishes to speak at that time. We'll hear, take public testimony. So that's the plan and. Uh, we will adjourn this application to December ninth. At seven P M. If that's satisfactory for the applicant. at seven PM if that's satisfactory for the applicant and for the objector.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
December's going to be a doozy, folks. Bring your coffee.
No no's.
This application will probably take all of December.
Oh dear God, please. Please no.
I just outlined what we have to go through and that's, that's how it looks to me, but maybe, maybe I'm pessimistic. All right, so may I have a motion to adjourn twenty-nine parks? I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Uh, where am I? Sixty-five Park Avenue to the regular meeting of December ninth.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
No further notice being required. Mr. Prince moves. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Wagner, seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any of one opposed? I hear no one opposed and for members of the public that may be here, uh, this is the legal notice of the adjournment. There'll be no further notice required. There'll be no publication and no letters mailed, so. Any questions as to the schedule, you can contact Ms. Cosenza, but we're adjourned to December ninth at nine PM. Um, any other business this evening, Board?
I have none.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You as well.
And happy birthday to me and happy birthday to George tomorrow. George's birthday is tomorrow.
No, I just wanted to make a comment.
This is not the time for comments.
I know, but I, I just wanted to.
Time for comments, I'm sorry. It's time for questions and we're done with Mr. Miletto, so. This is not the.
The question is, okay, no, I just, I just wanted to give you our. There's an article in Business Insider about single-family homes. It's very interesting.
Now it's not the time for that. Sorry, you're not under oath. You can't testify, okay?
Not right.
This is a personal comment, but thank you.
You're not under oath. You can't comment.
Right, right, right. Okay.
So did we.
Good night, everyone.
Nice. Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we adjourn.
Right.
Bell, Nikki moves to her second.
I'll second.
Ms. Brown, second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing no one opposed, we are adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.